Okay, welcome, everybody. Welcome to our city council meeting. Today is Monday, November 7, 2022. It's approximately 1:00 PM. Before we have our pledge of allegiance, I'm going to ask if you please rise for a brief moment of silence as we reflect back on the brave men and women in the United States Armed Forces as they protect our interests around the globe, as well as the courageous men and women at Los Cruces Police Department and the Los Cruces Fire Department as they keep our cities safe 24/7/365. Mayor Protem, should you join me in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, undivisible, infinite and just as far.
Thank you. Okay, now we're going to have Jennifer Martinez from our communications office introduce our pets of the week.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. I am Jennifer Martinez with the city's communications office. And our pets of the week begin with Akali. This girl is about two years old and little. She is super sweet and ready to show that she wants your attention as soon as you start to walk toward her. She wants everyone to pet her and hang out with her. The ASCMV mentions that sometimes calicos are sassy, but this one is nothing but sugar. And then we have Olive. Olive is sweet, laid back, and just wants to hang out next to you all day long. She gets excited to go on walks, so if you need a walking buddy, this is the girl for you. Now, she's not big on cats, but she loves chicken. And this may not be the right pup for you if you are someone who has chickens in your yard. If you would like to get to know either of these cuties, you can call the ASCMV to arrange a meeting. You can call 3-820018. And with the new month, there are new adoption events. PetSmart is having a National Adoption Week event this weekend that takes place from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM on both Saturday and Sunday. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, Jennifer. Okay, next, we're going to have our jobs of the week. I believe Irene Pata from the Economic Development Department will be presenting those.
Good afternoon, mayor and city councilor. Irene Pata with Economic Development presenting jobs of the week. So we begin with the City of Los Cruces, who is looking for a librarian focusing on youth services and adult services. This position pays between $45,000 and $64,000 a year and is open until filled. White Sands Missile Range is looking for a supervisory helicopter pilot, and this position is starting at $79,000 a year and closes on November 21st. Citizens Bank of Los Cruces is looking for three part-time talent positions. These positions pay between $23,000 and $33,000 a year and closes on November 16th. Admiral Beverage Corporation is looking for an IT support specialist. This position pays between $2275 and $3070 an hour. This position closes on January 15, 2023. The Mesia Valley Public Housing Authority is looking for a public housing clerk. This is a part-time position. And this position pays between $22,000 and $31,000 a year and closes on November 13th. And finally, Keith Commissary Network is looking for a commissary operations manager, and this position pays between $68,000 and $104,000 a year and closes on January 12th. For a full list of jobs, internships, and volunteer opportunities, please visit los-cruces.org. And also, if you have any other questions about employment opportunities, please contact N M Workforce Connection at 575-524-6250. You can also visit them at their office at 226 South Alameda Boulevard or visit them online at employnm.com. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Irene. We appreciate that. Okay, so we have one presentation I'd like to make, a plaque I'd like to present. I'm thinking, should I invite him up here first or should I talk about his, a little bit of his bio and then surprise him? But no, he knows he's getting this. So Mario, can you join me up here? You want to bring your family or Heidi, if she's going to take pictures, but just join me here to my right. So if any of you are any Aggie aficionados, you know who this gentleman is. He's really put Los Cruces on the map. January 5, 2015 was a significant day in New Mexico State University's history. That's when Mario became the athletic director. And you know what? He, this is a guy who has so much energy. I like to think that I have a lot of energy, but this guy runs circles around me. And I just want to, I was looking at his bio, and I thought, you know, we kind of want to finish a little early today. And I thought, I'll just pick out a few things out of this. This is incredible. I'm so amazed and appreciative that, appreciative that you're our athletic director. And much like, much like when Chris Janz was wooed away, I'm afraid that that may eventually happen with Mario. And I don't want that to happen. So we're going to, we're probably going to help supplement the budget of New Mexico State to make sure you stay for a long time. But I just want to say a little bit about you, Mario. So under your leadership, you've won 60 championships, 60. The Aggies have a 63%, their student athletes have a 3.0 or better. Forty of the athletes have a perfect 4.0. In 2020, and I like this, any of you who, doesn't it bother you when GCU comes to town and they bring that van or bus and they are really loud? Well, these guys were the champions in track and field for five years in a row. And in 2020, the women's track and field dethroned them and, under your direction. 2018, football team won the Arizona Bowl. After 57 years of not winning a single bowl, 57. 2017, he hired Chris Janz as a men's basketball coach. Aggies, of course, as you know, won first round against UConn last year. And I remember as soon as he won, I'm texting Mario after he's, you know, after the celebration. I said, what can we do? How much do we need to raise to keep Chris here? And it was like, Ken, it's over. Because they offered him like $2.5 million. $2.5 million. I mean, that's, his ability to spot talent and to bring it here to New Mexico State with the budget that he gets is incredible. And so next, let's go to 2021. He hires Jerry Kill as our football coach. So this weekend, on TV ironically, Minnesota's playing. So I tell my wife, I say, you see that team right there? She goes, yes. I said, that's Jerry Kill, the coach of the Aggies coached them. Really? And then also, who was playing ironically, not against each other, was TCU. They were also on TV. This is a Big Ten and a Big 12 football team. These are what they call Power Five conferences. And again, all because of you, how you were able to convince Coach Kill to come here. And he's already seen success. They've won more games this season than they have had in the last few years. And it's incredible. Let's not forget, 2022, you just hired Jody Adam Birch, 27-year veteran, one of the winningest coach there at Wichita State. Really looking forward to some great wins from her as well. Now, let's talk about Mario Mocha, the businessman. This is incredible. This guy, let's see here. You made a deal with Cantara Negra, the first tequila partnership any university has ever had with a university Division One. We have beer, coffee, tequila, wine, and whiskey. So all these go to help supplement his budget. Efo, can we look at something like that? So that is just a little inkling. There's more. This is incredible. I read this, as I read this, I'm like, your contract expires when? In 2023? Efo, you got to get with the chancellor. Okay? So Mario, I want to give this to you. It's called the Mayor's Distinguished Service Award. You know, you've brought New Mexico State Athletics and the City of Los Cruces together like no other AD has ever done. So I want to give this to you in recognition of your commitment and dedication to helping make Los Cruces a better community this November 2022. Welcome to say a few words?
Mayor, I'll be brief. And thank you very much. And thanks to the council as well for this award. I certainly want to acknowledge my wife Heidi and my oldest child Addie in the audience, and one of my old classmates from New Mexico State that I met in 1987, Johnny Montoya. So thanks for being here. I'll be, as I said, I'll be brief. I accept this, excuse me, I accept this on behalf of our 400 student athletes and our 100 staff members. Because they're the ones who have gone out in the community pre-pandemic. We averaged over 6,000 hours, whether that's in elementary schools, whether that was in Toys for Tots, you know, our teddy bear tosses. Right now, all of November, we're raising money for the Aggie pantry, the food bank. So a big kudos to them because they get out and we ask everybody to come to our games. It's incumbent upon all of our 16 teams, 10 women's and 6 men's. They're mandated to align themselves with the charity in Los Cruces, and they've been doing a tremendous job of that. Certainly, we always try to also bring business to the community by hosting as many Western Athletic Conference events and subsequently Conference USA events. We'll be bringing the softball, the softball programs, all the parents, all the fans. Hopefully, that will just, you know, make for better tax dollars into our community. And then finally, certainly, all those products are small businesses, New Mexico businesses. Oftentimes, they're owned by alums. So we're certainly trying to do what we can. But we certainly appreciate our relationship with the city. It is much appreciated. I think it's a heck of a lot better than Albuquerque at UNM and El Paso with UTEP, but hopefully, nobody will use that against me. But I just want to say thanks for the award on behalf of all of our student athletes and our staff. Thank you. We, the mayor's on Twitter, if you haven't noticed. So we did get some big news. We got a star basketball player from another school eligible today. We've got some good NCA news. So we've got a game tonight at 7 o'clock, should be pretty exciting. But a whole slate. We've got women's basketball on Wednesday, mayor, you'll be there. Thursday, we've got volleyball. And Saturday, we've got volleyball and football. So in your side job, thanks for being there, too.
You know, I forgot to mention, when you invited me once, this is funny. He invited me once to, you know, meet his staff. So being very naive, I just figured, okay, there's, I don't know, probably be seven or eight coaches. Wow. There's more than 100? There's got to be like 100? There, what do you have, 15 different head coaches, assistant coaches? It's incredible. You run a big department. That's right. Very significant soccer team, so let's send some positive vibes for that way. So again, Mario, thank you so much for all that you do for our community, for New Mexico State, and go Aggies. All right, thanks. I didn't hear anyone clap when I said go Aggies. Okay, so now I'm going to go to the conflict of interest statement. This will ask if any member of the city council, city manager, or any member of the city staff has any known conflict of interest on any item on the agenda.
None, Candera.
None.
None, Flores?
None.
None, Abeda. Mayor, I'd just like to note that the owner of the property on 8.4, I spoke with him briefly at a community meeting I had in my district several months ago. And I'm no longer part of those conversations, but I did want to disclose that the owner did come to one of my meetings and we spoke briefly. Thank you.
Okay, not a problem. It's not an appeal or anything like that, so we're good. Thank you for that disclosure. Okay, seeing none, then we're going to go to public participation. This is where members of the public can speak to city council for a total of seven minutes, three minutes here at the podium and up to four minutes total, not to exceed twice during a council meeting on maybe on an item on the agenda. If you can't wait for that item to be discussed on the agenda, please let us know. And if you need to just say your concerns or what you wish to say, just let us know, please. Okay, so I usually start on my left. No one on the first row, I don't know. Did you have anything else you wanted to say? You guys are welcome to stay or leave. I know you guys have a busy schedule. No one on the second row, looks like the third row is only Johnny. I wondered why you were hanging out with Mario so much. Now I know, so it's good. Fourth row? I just need you to state your name, please, and, okay? And if you want to bring that podium down, there's a little switch to your right.
I think I'm good.
You're good, okay.
Mr. Mayor and councillors, my name is Diana Diaz, and I live in District 3. I am here today to be a voice for my neighbors and myself to remind you about what is happening on Pico Street next to Desert Hope Apartments. I am a retired senior citizen. I live on a fixed income. In the past, you have said that the crime problem is a community problem, but I cannot afford to pay for other people's criminal acts. We continue to have so many problems, and now our mailbox. For over 30 years, our home had a regular mailbox, no problem. We have people coming from Desert Hope Apartments at 1, 2, 3 in the morning to see if they can take anything from it. We have, we have had to pay $60 to put a new mailbox with a lock. Who is, and who is going to pay me back for that expense? I say they are from Desert Hope because we captured them on our cameras. Will the city pay for all of us to have post office boxes so that our mail and sensitive information is safe? Will you protect us? Before you say my neighbors and I are uncompassionate, I want you to know that we help and support our community in many ways. And today I ask you, where is the compassion for us? We say, you say to call the police. They don't come, and if they do, they can't do anything. You ask for community solutions, but they only say solutions coming from you is call the police. I'm sorry, but that is not a solution. I cannot walk in my own neighborhood. The trash is outrageous. We have people walking through our neighborhood day and night, looking in our windows, coming to our doors, scoping out our homes, and you say call the police. Right now, we are in election time. I have done my duty to vote, and we deserve a safe neighborhood like Sonoma Ranch, like East Mesa. They say, well, they have to go somewhere. I say put Desert Hope and Sonoma Ranch. Do not make us continue to suffer because you don't feel it. We elected you to represent us. We call on you to do, to help us to do that. So I want to thank you today for listening to me. And I just want you to know that I have contacted my representative for Council 3. And I have called her already twice, and she has not even returned my calls. So I feel like she's not even interested. And the last time I did talk to her, she was, like, she didn't really want to hear me what I was saying. So it's like, I don't see her here today, so, which, that's okay because she doesn't want to listen to me anyway. So that's all I have for today. I hope you all are listening. Thank you.
May I ask her a question?
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you. I'm sorry to hear that you've lost your mail. I had constituents, I live in Sonoma Ranch, so it is prevalent throughout the city. So there was, there has been a widespread theft through all mailboxes, not just your district. And what, and the thing, though, is that the USPS is a function of the federal government. It's not run by the federal government. It's an interesting relationship that it has with the government. Nonetheless, the jurisdiction does fall with your congressperson or your US senator. So I've told my, we don't have any control over the mailboxes. And I'm, based on what you've said, it sounds like your mailbox is on the street, on the curb.
Yes, all of our, the mailboxes are along the street.
Yeah.
And so we, every now and then, we see all our mailboxes are open. They're left open. And it's not the mailman.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. The ones in Sonoma Ranch have actually been broken into. I mean, they've really dug out the, you know, the key area. And, you know, I, the only thing I would suggest short of, well, contacting a US congressperson and US senator to see if they can have, you know, some say over the USPS. And the other is perhaps to get a lock on your, on your postal, but they probably carry that away.
Well, I, I actually called the post office and asked if we could move our box, you know, like, put it closer to our house or on the wall, you know, the outside wall to our house. And they told me that once it was put there, we cannot move it. I don't know how, who else I would talk to about that. And I did, I did have a post office box, but I'm closing it because the rates have gone up so high, you know? So I can't do that anymore, so, so I need help.
Well, I'm really sorry. Maybe, you know, the city can contact the federal government to alert them to this horrible theft that's going on.
Yes, because, and I know they're from Desert Hope because I see them all the time. I pass by there all the time. I kind of recognize the people there, and they're, now they're coming, you know, back and forth.
Well, I, you know, it's hard to know who the thieves are because I don't think Desert Hope people would schlep out to Sonoma Ranch.
Oh, I know, I know. I've been taking pictures.
I think it takes all kinds of people to do that.
No, I, well, there's probably other people, but I know the ones in my area because I live there. So I see them all the time. And I'm constantly, you know, if I'm going in my car, I stop and I take pictures, you know? So I have a bunch of pictures.
So Mrs. Diaz?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. If you recall, a while back, there was supposed to be a new change in management?
Uh huh, yes.
And so, like anything else, I wanted to give that a chance. And I don't know, I presume that you feel that that, you haven't seen anything in your words since it's changed, that new management, I mean?
Well, I was there the day they had that meeting and right there at Desert Hope. And I mean, I saw people there from all over. I don't know who they were. They were cleaning and even trimming the bushes and just doing all kinds of stuff. And it was, it looked, it was looking nice. Well, guess what? The next day, I took pictures because there was trash all over the place. Like, you know, they were trying to make it presentable to us that we're going to that meeting that day. Well, it was presentable, but the next day, it went right back.
So, I mean, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but so after, in your opinion, this new management company, you didn't really see too much of a change or?
Well, I, actually, I'm seeing more people coming from other places. And there was one girl in particular there that I saw, that I have seen her at Target, and I've seen her at Albertson's in that area. She's in a wheelchair, and she's asking for money, and she's asked me for money and everything. And I was totally surprised when I saw her at that meeting. She was walking all over the place. They even talked to her. And it was like, she's in a wheelchair at Target, asking for money. But then over here at Desert Hope, apparently she has a room there at Desert Hope. She was walking, I didn't see the wheelchair anywhere. So they're playing games with us.
So I'm going to, I'm going to try to reach out to the other parties, the community of Hope and the Housing Authority, and try to sit down with the city manager myself and see what other options there may be.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you so much.
Okay, anyone else on that fourth row?
Mayor, councillors, from a local citizen who lives near the historic district of Alameda, terrorized by the criminal element.
One, did you state your name? I can't remember. Oh, you didn't, I'm sorry.
Juan Garcia, yes. Last night, quote, "Around 10:45, I was washing dishes. A white truck with tinted windows stopped in front of that window and fired a gun, then peeled out and even left skid marks on the road." Yes, I called the police and filed a police report. The police said it's been going on in this town. Crime here is out of control. We have absolute criminal anarchy here. The drug problem is out of control in this town. There are absolutely no consequences. A man was arrested across the street on his 13th burglary, only to be released once more to continue on his crime spree. New Mexico is turning into a cesspool of crime and fentanyl, to say the least. Their policies are, quote, "not working." That was a quote. Last Tuesday, 30 October, she, Judge Goldbaum, alleged that Miyagashima installed Ryan to incarcerate more defendants with nonviolent charges. Per the New Mexico Code of Judicial Conduct, Rule 2100, preamble B, "They, judges, should aspire to all times to conduct that ensures the greatest possible public confidence in their independence, impartiality, integrity, and competence." Do these comments inspire confidence in the judiciary? Is she defending the victims or is she defending the criminals? The president and vice president spoke in Albuquerque, and not a word about crime. Spoke only on the killing of the unborn and more social handouts. Ferrari, Steinborn, Rubio, and others are silent on crime. It's not politically expedient and not part of the progressive socialist agenda. So we ignore it, and hopefully, us citizens will pretend it doesn't exist, will look the other way. Instead, let's spend more money, more taxpayer money. UBI, bonds. From the Los Cruces Bulletin, 3 November, "Petty crime in the city is the biggest challenge going forward," Miyagashima said, noting that eight individuals have 235 recent arrests among them for criminal damage to property and criminal trespass. That's about 30 crimes per criminal. We too have verified this information through public records. So what do we do? We throw our hands up and we blame the legislature, the same ones who refuse to acknowledge. We have four members of the city council up for reelection next year in 2023. I hope citizens who are being victimized and live in terror remember our record, your records on fighting crime. Maybe your policies were meant to fix the problem and fell short or meant to create more dependency on public welfare. Either way, they are not working. I hope the citizens and victims take a hard look at your policies and determine if they want more of the same because...
Sorry, Juan, you're out of time.
Yes, sir. You own the problem. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else on the fourth row? No, okay. How about fifth row?
Good afternoon, Judge Goldbaum, Los Cruces Municipal Court. Last week, Judge Martin signed an order stating that Karen Ryan is not legally qualified for appointment to serve as municipal judge in Los Cruces because he is not an active member of the New Mexico... member of the New Mexico bar, and respondent municipal Judge Goldbaum acted within her administrative authority in refusing to allow an unqualified person to hear cases in municipal court. So I have copies of that entire order for everyone on the council, and I would like it included in the record of this meeting. Additionally, I would like to, again, urge the council not to take up any matters affecting municipal court without first getting good current data from the court and also with my knowledge. So the last request I have is to be put back on the agenda so that I can do a full presentation to the council. Thank you.
Judge, I do have one question, if you were willing to answer it. So, and I'm just gonna take this as, from the constitutional standpoint. So if there's something that, if a law is passed that conflicts against the United States Constitution, and the judge strikes it down saying, "No, you can't do that because it's unconstitutional, it doesn't correspond to the Constitution," you support that, correct?
I'm not sure I understand your question, but I think the best person to answer your legal questions would be your city attorney, sir. Thank you.
Yeah, well, okay, well, what I wanted to ask you was, our ordinance conflicts with our city charter, and that's why we felt that the city charter takes precedence, so. And the city charter doesn't require them being a member of the bar, it does require that they be a lawyer, and so, anyways. Okay, next is, what row is that?
Your Honor. I just want to comment on that.
Okay.
The, the city, the city charter specifically states that when someone is running for election, so I don't understand Judge Martin's decision at all, and I don't understand why you come in here every Monday, Judge Goldbaum, while, aren't there any, isn't court, is everything, what, just set aside or continued, or do you not have a calendar on Monday? All that being said, going back to the intent of the charter, the charter states that when you're up for election for municipal judge, you have to be an active member of the bar. When being appointed to fill a position, it's silent as to that. It says, it doesn't say active member of the state bar. And in fact, I'm an attorney in California, and I have a lot of friends who are, sit on the, on the bench. In California, they're not licensees, and I would imagine, and I, I try to find exactly the language for the state bar of New Mexico, but I just want to tell you that I beg to differ with, with your opinion, I beg to differ respectfully with, with Judge Martin's opinion, and I don't know if it's going to be taken up to an appeals court, but I'm not sure that you're entirely correct, Judge Goldbaum, with all due respect. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor. Okay, so that was fifth row. Anyone, yes, anyone come forward, please?
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. My name is Beth Bardwell, and I am one of three co-chairs of the Las Cruces Coalition for Attainable Housing, and I'm joined today by another co-chair and several members of the coalition who are in the audience. We want to show you some videos made by coalition members on the issue of affordable housing, but before we show them, I would like to make a few introductory comments. Tomorrow is Election Day, and we wanted to thank city council and the mayor and staff for giving voters the opportunity to decide whether to invest $6 million in general obligation bond funding to increase affordable housing throughout the city. And we urge voters to exercise their right to vote and to vote yes for the Affordable Housing Bond, because there is a shortage of thousands of affordable housing units for low to moderate income households, working families, to buy or rent in city limits. Inflation is at 8.2%, and the median sale price for a home is about $327,000. The price is out of reach for many longtime residents and working families. And if voters were to approve this bond, the city with nonprofit and private housing developers can build housing that ordinary Los Cruces can afford, like working families and essential workers, including, including entry-level police officers, firefighters, teachers, grocery clerks, nursing assistants, childcare workers, who, who earn between 60 and 120% of the area median income, and want to live in the city limits close to work. Housing for senior citizens and disabled veterans who want to live in city limits but have a fixed income, and the average social security benefit is about $1,400, like millennials or children who are just starting out, who want to live close to family but not necessarily in our homes, but earn $15 or less an hour. And we also want to let voters know that a yes vote for this bond will not raise our city's property tax rate. It will remain at the same rate that you see on your 2022 tax bill that you just received from the county treasurer. And with that, I'd like to show some of these videos.
While you're getting that ready, I just want my colleagues to know that we have reviewed these, and this probably should have been put under presentation, so we apologize for that. So what I'm trying to say is, we've cleared these, these videos, she's about to show.
Thank you.
So on November 8th, go to the polls, vote yes for the GO bond and support affordable housing for the city of Las Cruces. What we do is, we take the amount of funds for this example here with $6 million GO bond money, we can leverage that money with other financial institutions, and we can turn that money fivefold. So we can take that $6 million and turn that into $30 million. Not only that, but it produces jobs, provides for a tax base, the main goal is to provide affordable housing for all those that need it.
Whoops, let's see here. So if I want to get out, I press escape. And when I do, it doesn't. Okay, thank you.
Daniel Sanchez, a citizen of Las Cruces. Affordable housing benefits the families of Las Cruces by offering an opportunity to not just survive here in Las Cruces, but to live and thrive and grow. Home ownership for me means having a place where you can set down roots and build something of your own, something that, that has your unique name, flair, special touch. I think that's part of what makes Las Cruces great, is everyone has something to contribute.
You know, I think people are struggling all over the country. We have to work together to make our community stronger. We want people to have clean, safe houses through bonds that won't increase our taxes. We can build apartments, condos, we can help people who really need to have a roof over their heads, have a clean, safe place to live. It's gonna help our economy, and that means it helps Las Cruces as a whole. I hope people will get to the polls. It's really important to be there, Election Day.
My name is Melissa Antiveros. I work with Community Action Agency. About 36% of households in the US rent their homes, and nearly half spend more than 30% of their income on rent. This cost burden means many renters are unable to allocate resources for other important needs such as health care, education, and healthy food. Studies have shown that when families gain access to affordable housing, their health and quality of life improves.
The GO bond has been placed in order for us to begin a conversation and building of affordable housing. The divine says that there will always be poor, and that we should take care of them. It's really our moral responsibility to share our wealth with those who don't have. On November 8th, I really encourage you, strongly encourage you, to step out and vote yes for affordable housing.
Thank you very much for allowing us to share the voices and perspectives of our coalition members.
Absolutely, thank you, Beth. So that was fifth row, anyone else on the fifth row? How about the sixth row? The one on the sixth row? Okay, so, oh, yeah, please come forward. Just need you to state your name, please.
Manager, councilors. My name's Alef Medina, this gentleman is...
I'm sorry.
My name's Alef Medina.
Okay.
This gentleman is Rosendo Moreno. I'm not really sure if this is a proper time to address this, this is regarding the Kilby, Kilby Motel?
Are you, can you wait until the agenda?
Yes, yeah, that's what we want to know.
If you can wait until that, we'd appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay. So was that the sixth row, or was that the seventh row? All right, so I'm gonna invite our FFA members who are in the audience, if you'd like to come down, and I'll join you down here at the podium, right here. If you want to join me to my right, please? So every time I see these really cool jackets of yours, reminds me of when I was in high school. Now, we were always jealous of those, they were always such a nice jackets, they have the really cool, I always thought it was an eagle, I never really paid attention, it looks like an eagle, okay? But nonetheless, future farmers of America. And so I know you all want, had some national wins, and so I'm gonna invite the spokesperson to say a few words and, and kind of share with us what you all did and how it all went. And just need you to state your name, please.
Alrighty, so I am Jasmine Montano, I am part of our Vet Science Team. We won at our state competition as first-place winners, so that invites us to go to our national convention, which is held in Indianapolis, Indiana. So teams from all across the United States get to go and compete, and over 68,000 kids showed up to this event. And so we also have our Food Science Team, which is down at the end, which consists of Addie, I mean, not Addie, Emma, Ava, Taylor, and Hope. And then Grace, right here, is another member of our Vet Science Team. And so both teams got a silver medal for our placement at the national competition.
Well, thank you for sharing that with us. Was there anyone else who wished to say a couple words? No? Okay. Did you, does someone want to take pictures? Okay, so that was the seventh row, I believe, is, anyone else? Sarah? Yeah. Just need you to state your name, please.
City councilors and mayor, my name is Sarah Smith. I know that you are trying to find ways to deal with the increased homelessness and substance abuse problems in Las Cruces, and it's important to look closely at what has already been done and whether it is working. An independent journalist lived at the Desert Hope Affordable Homeless Housing Project and has recently self-published a book about his experiences there, in case you haven't seen it. The author, Ital Iman, moved into Desert Hope because he was struggling with finances and housing himself. He didn't move there with the intention of writing about Desert Hope. He was initially very optimistic about living there and said, quote, "I was blessed to be a part of the 40 persons to be accepted into this newly refurbished package of charity and hope. I am thankful." Over time, through his experience, he came to have a very different opinion of Desert Hope. Here are some more quotes from his book. Page 61, "There is one guy beside me in Unit 118. He has a sign of his hours of operation on his door. He's up most of the night, and there is a constant flow of traffic in and out of his place. He seems to be the king of Desert Hope." Page 62, "The man in Unit 118 has broken every law in the agreement of the apartment complex. Are the cameras on? The people in charge have seen the sign on his door and have seen the traffic. Could this guy be selling drugs? The traffic sure looks like it." Page 63, "I was awakened to loud voices from 118. Then suddenly, the noise was outside my window. There were men fighting and using vulgar speech, hitting each other." Page 76, "Desert Hope is a very beautiful place, but the people make it the ghetto." Page 80, "I opened my door to see a man who had come out of Unit 118 poking a needle into his arm." Page 83, "The man in Unit 119 was throwing things against the door in a mad fit. The items were hitting the door with great force, chairs, pots, pans, anything he could get his hands on. Then he would take it all and throw it outside in front of his unit." Page 83, "Each and every person here is on some type of drug, fentanyl, and has some profound mental illness." Page 84, "The man in Unit 118 gathers wood and does carpenter work 24/7. You can find him hammering, using power tools, even way past midnight, sometimes around 3:00 AM. He's beating on walls, playing loud music. Two times a month at least, he clogs up the sewer system, and my shower drain overflows unsanitary water into my unit. The staff seems not to care." The author of this book includes several of the email complaints that he sent to the staff. They were never able to help him or fix the situation. Page 90, "This place has become the very pit of hell, full of drugs and drug use, a cesspool of mentally ill persons." Page 126, "If the culprits among the tenants here are removed, the coffers would run dry. The units must be full. I was told that, and I have experienced that. I have lived here one month short of a year. I have seen drug traffic from Unit 118. I have made it known that this unit is the downfall of Desert Hope, and the ones in charge are aware of it. They turn a blind eye and a deaf ear." So that was after all the activity in June. This is, you know, just looking here, August, September timeframe is when he's writing this. Now I ask you as the city council, is there anything you can do to fix Desert Hope for the benefit of those who are living there? It is clear that the Housing First model does not work for people who have substance abuse and mental health issues, yet the city council is continuing to use this model and has recently allocated $300,000 to pay rent and property damage expenses to encourage landlords to rent to homeless people, and is now asking for $6 million more for affordable housing, which may include more homeless housing projects. This is not working. I urge you to move away from this approach and focus instead on substance abuse and mental health treatment. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, Sarah. Anyone else on the seventh row? Eighth row? Yes? Yes, ma'am?
Good afternoon, my name is Sofia Guzmán. I'm an employee with Missia Valley Community of Hope. I'm assigned at Desert Hope Apartments. I've been there for three months. Since I got there, I do case management as well with my other coworker, who's fully placing there. We didn't have management there for a while. They just barely got there about three, four months ago, at the time I... They just barely got there about three, four months ago, at the time I joined Monsia Valley Community of Hope. We've been changing it slowly. I do the supportive services, and I am there to assist the Desert Hope tenants and clients that we have. Anything that they need, we're there for them. We support them. And it's not, I want to say, it's not the people at Desert Hope. It's not our clients, it's not our tenants. It's the people coming in. The support for them is there, that we have. Slowly, we're changing things in there, but we need the support of law enforcement as well. As a case management in there, we cannot do it on our own. We also need case man... We need the management part, which is going to be jail grade, and housing as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Sylvia. Okay, was the eighth row, anyone else? Nicole? If there's going to be others who want to speak, if you want to come forward, there's some empty chairs here in the front.
Somebody leave their phone? Thanks, Beth. My name's Nicole Martinez. I'm the director of the Monsia Valley Community of Hope. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Mr. Mayor, should I need it? Could I have one more minute, in case I can't cruise the... I forgot my glasses, so my reading might be slow.
Four minutes, or... Okay.
Thank you.
I have to take that on the other end, so if you want to talk, one, three minutes.
Understand. Thank you. I'd like to talk about Lavelle. This is Lavelle. His studio apartment at Desert Hope provided Lavelle with the longest period living indoors in many years, 11 months. He worked as an institutional cook at soup kitchens and homeless shelters around the United States, but at age 59, this work became too difficult for him. When he arrived at Camp Hope, he had no real income, and the staff helped him apply for social security disability and for his food stamps. Lavelle moved to Desert Hope last year and, in his own words, was very grateful for his apartment. He said he felt a new contentment for the first time in many years and hoped to remain at Desert Hope forever. Sadly, Lavelle died of natural causes a few months ago, but he spent the final year of his life safely sheltered and protected by his fellow residents of Desert Hope. He did not die homeless. I'm aware that you get weekly updates on the Desert Hope Apartments at these Monday meetings from someone who does not live there, work there, or even live in the neighborhood, but I'd like to give our own update, since we are there five days a week. There are two staff, you just met one, Sofia, who work onsite with the residents, providing supportive services, connecting them with agencies such as Amador Health Center, who provide onsite medical screenings, FYI Plus and their harm reduction programs, Casa de Peregrinos, and more. It so far has proved not too dangerous for our staff to be onsite. We do continue to have issues with visitors to the property, and some of them arguably are also our clients. We used our seed money for Desert Hope to hire security, and we've offered to hire off-duty officers to help with the property, but have so far been unable to add that service insurance issue so far, but we still are willing to provide that. We send mono-e-mono and outreach staff to the entire neighborhood weekly, not just when we have meetings there, to the complex and surrounding areas where the unhoused visitors are leaving trash behind. And I think this gets to the bigger picture here. Besides providing an update, I wanted to speak against the false narratives we keep being subjected to. It's true that there are unhoused people in our community, and it's true that trash does get left behind. So it seems logical that if you want there to be less homeless people in your neighborhood, if you want less litter left behind, then let's get people indoors with their own trashcans. Let's provide more housing. If we leave people unhoused, then that means there will continue to be homeless people visiting Desert Hope because they have nowhere else to go. We're not only seeing people experiencing homelessness in need of affordable housing. And affordable housing is not just homeless housing. We get calls all the time from people on fixed incomes who cannot afford their rents, veterans, seniors, families. We had several calls this year from students entering Burrell College of Medicine, Doñana Community College, and NMSU, asking if we had room at Camp Hope because they could not find an affordable apartment. 421 veterans came to Community of Hope last year in need of help. How many more homeless veterans do we need to see in our community? I know this small attempt to this audience today will likely not stop the false narrative, might not change anyone's minds, but what I hope it does do is assure this community that we will speak up for those who continue to be silenced and continue to be misrepresented, intimidated, even harassed. We won't be swayed from doing the hard work, from finding real solutions and actually helping people, and we certainly won't stop housing people in need. Thank you.
Nicole, before you leave, I'm just going to ask you a question, since you're here, since Judge Goldbaum is here. Today's November 7th. If we go back 60 days to September 7th, how many times has Judge Goldbaum visited you?
Mr. Mayor, Judge Goldbaum has been to the Community of Hope one time in the last seven months, is that...
No, in the last two months.
In the last two months?
Just one time.
Oh, I don't think... I don't know that it was in the last two months.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
But it was at least in the last...
I was just trying to clarify something, so... Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. One last thing. May I approach the bench to drop off these cards that Councilor Flores asked for? That be all right?
I'll share them. Or give them to our city clerk. Thank you, Nicole.
Okay, so that was eighth row. Anyone else? How about last row? So no one... Oh, Rick?
Hello, my name is Rick Renaud. I want to address... I don't think anyone here that is complaining about the apartments or the area there is giving false narratives. I've worked there in the middle of this, the corner of Solano in Missouri, is where I've worked. And I've seen my owner of the building by rent, windows busted out, the old Taco Bell. I'm... All I'm saying is, it's not false narratives, so thank you.
Okay, thank you, Rick. Okay, so now I'm going to go to my right. Looks like no one, first row, second row, looks like all staff. Third row does as well, as the fourth row, fifth row, sixth row, anyone? Seventh? Eighth? Anyone on my right? Okay. All right, that concludes public participation. So I have a closed meeting statement to read. Okay, so Las Cruces City Council made a closed session at 10:01 a.m., October 24th, 2022. Following, members were in attendance, Councilors Flores, Corran, Bencomo, Graham, Abeta, Gondara, and myself, although I did show up at 10:40. Staff present was Eifopili, city manager, Joe Slend Garrison, acting city attorney, Brad Douglas, also Deputy City Attorney's Office. Haley? I'm sorry, Mayor Protem wrote this here, so...
Yes, Haley.
Haley Graham?
Haley Graham.
Haley Graham?
And Damian Martinez.
And Damian Martinez, they're outside attorneys. Blaine Minette is also outside attorney. Eric Enriquez, Assistant City Manager. Barbara De León, Chief Administrative Officer. Ikane Tamopeo, Assistant City Manager. And Joe Richards came in at 11:46, HR Director, and J.C. Borrego, Deputy HR Director. The meeting adjourned at 12:01 p.m., and for the record, Las Cruces City Council made a closed session, discussed those limited items listed in the posted notice, which was, one, to discuss pending or threatened litigation regarding Ramsey versus the City of Las Cruces, which is closed pursuant to NMSA 1978 Section 10-15-1H Number 7; and number two, to discuss bargaining strategy preliminary to collective bargaining negotiations, which is closed pursuant to NMSA 1978 Section 10-15-1H Number 5. Okay, so now, we're going to go to acceptance of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second by Flores.
Motion made by Councilor Bencomo, second by Councilor Flores to accept the agenda as presented. Christine?
This is on the motion to accept the agenda as presented. Councilor Abeta?
Yes.
Councilor Graham is absent. Councilor Bencomo?
Yes.
Councilor Corran?
Yes.
Councilor Flores?
Yes.
Councilor Gondara?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Okay, so we go to item 8.1, Resolution 23-052. A motion and a second, please.
So moved by Flores.
Second, Abeta.
Motion made by Councilor Flores, second by Councilor Abeta. Rocio Gomez will be presenting.
So 8.1, Sheryl Delacruz, Budget Analyst. Greetings, Mayor and council members. Today I will be presenting our FY23 First Quarter Budget Adjustment. So we have no new programs or policy initiatives. We are making adjustments focused on compliance and alignment. We practice routine best practices, and the data presented here today is summarized, but of course you can refer to your packet for more detailed information. This screen is going over the adjustments being made in our general fund. So Mayor and Council Office, we are increasing budget by $100,000. These funds are needed to pay council membership dues and leak fees. Municipal Court, we're increasing budget by $85,000. This is for the prorated salary for the municipal judge, two, so the second judge. For Fire, we're increasing budget by $803,000, mainly carryovers, which do include some vehicles, and there are expenses for the academy and cadets in there. Economic Development Department, we are increasing by $148,000, and this is for the Las Cruces Innovation and Industrial Park, along with some funds needed to complete some master plans. Human Resources, we are increasing budget by $202,000. This is for self-insured medical invoices that are still rolling through, also some invoices for prescription drug dental plans and unemployment claims that need to be paid. We have various departments increases, which total about $427,000, primarily for carryovers from the previous fiscal year. Various department transfers, which do total to $3.1 million. That does include environmental gross receipt tax transfer of $1.8 million. We have a vehicle acquisition fund transfer, prisoner care, and also Sonoma Ranch Special Project Transfer included in that total. So some of our other funds, we... For our Special Revenue Reimbursement Grant Fund, the cinematic infrastructure, we are just reauthorizing that. It was originally budgeted in Fund 4100, which was our capital projects reimbursement grants fund, and we're just moving that over to Fund 2100, which is the Special Revenue Reimbursement Grant Fund. Emergency Medical Services for Fire, we are increasing both revenue and expenses by $5,000, and that's just to match the amount received. Same thing for Police Protection Fund, we're increasing both revenue and expenses by $38,000, and that's to match the amount of funding that came in for that. Vehicle forage for police expenses, we are increasing by $5,200, and that is... Those expenses are needed for the drug recognition experts. Flood control within Public Works, we are increasing $30,000 for recycling. Within our Gas Tax Fund, within Public Works, we are increasing expenses of $702,000, and that is for dump truck, bucket truck, F-250, and increased costs of distributor truck pneumatic roller. Within the TID, we are budgeting the revenues, which are $5.3 million. Las Cruces Convention Center, we're increasing by $625,000, and that is for furniture fixtures and equipment for $150,000. The other part of that is for carpeting, HVAC, and electrical work scheduled for $475,000, which come to the total of $625. 2019 GOVON, we're increasing that expense by $54,000 for property taxes. Capital Projects Reimbursement Fund for Police, we are actually decreasing both revenue and expenses by $47,000, and that is because the P-95 compliant radios grant was fully expended. 2017 NMFA Streets Fund, Public Works, we are decreasing by $598,000, and that is for the Tashiro Road Widening Project. We're also bringing down revenue within that same fund by $1,750, and that is to reduce for the projected revenue investment income. And then in Utilities, we are increasing their expense by $25,000, and that's simply to cover operational needs. Again, a lot of which is the adjustments included in this, were for budget to actuals for various departments, along with carryovers from FY22. You can find further details in your Attachment A. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Cynthia Campo to go over the CIP portion.
Thank you. Good afternoon, members of council and mayor. I am Cynthia Campo, the CIP analyst in the city manager's office. I will be going over the CIP amendments, most of which are budget-to-actual adjustments, which are also referred to as carryover, where it... Where the carryover budget is adjusted to match the actual project budget. There are several pages, and most of them are budget-to-actual adjustments. To begin, the cinematic infrastructure and soundstage, as Sheryl had pointed out, it is... The reauthorization was approved for LITA, Energy Efficiency Program. It is a budget-to-actual amendment. The roof replacement program, $153,382 is being moved to a Fielder Safe Haven for additional renovations. City Hall security upgrades, that is a $15,000 amendment to increase the... Improve the security in the public works suite. And then the other two for LRU runway extension and La Clínica de Familia Behavioral Health Facility are both budget-to-actual amendments. The Monsia Valley Community of Hope, Casa de Pregninos, food rescue warehouse, health facility improvements, solar parking are all budget-to-actual amendments. East Mesa Baton Memorial Pool Shade Structure is a... An adjustment for the maintenance... I mean, for the repair of the shade structures. And then the last... Oh, I'm sorry. The Fielder Memorial Safe Haven renovations, that is additional funds for the renovations. And then the last one is medium landscaping, which is also a budget-to-actuals amendment. All of the... Let me see. Regional Recreational Aquatic Center Phase 2, competitive pool construction, competitive pool enclosure, fire department equipment, police department evidence building, public safety, regional radio communication systems are all budget-to-actual amendments. The last one, Casalina Curs reconstruction, is... The last one, Casalina Acres Reconstruction is, it is an amendment to revise funding source, replacing bonds with taxes. The Bellama Drive, Lee's Drive to Luna Street is a CIP adjustment. It's a transfer from South Main for increased costs. Brown Farm ponding improvements has been removed because the project has been completed. Campo Street Design and Reconstruction is a budget to actuals amendment. The drainage infrastructure improvement, it has increased because it has combined the McClure and Mesquite Torneo Drainage Projects. The East Mesa Recreation Complex Roads is a budget to actuals amendments, as well as taxes has been added to the funding source. East Mesa Road Drainage is a budget to actuals amendment, as well as taxes has been added as a funding source. Go Bonds, ARPA Funding, Park and Sport Field Improvement and Additions, New Animal Shelter Facility, New Fire Station Number Three Building, and walking, jogging, biking trails and improvement is, all have budget to actuals amendments. The Madrid Avenue Extension and Magdalena Drive Storm Repairs are both budget to actual amendments. McClure and the Mesquite Torneo Drainage are the ones that were moved to the other project. McPhee Valley First, Valley to First is also a budget to actuals amendment. And Midway Avenue Gas Line Road to Mesa Drive is the, has been added as, let me see. Excuse me. Midway was funded in FY22, but the costs were not known due to the design being in progress, and costs are now in and ready to move on construction. North Fork, Las Cruces, Arroyo, and Picacho Avenue Hawk System are just budget to actuals amendments. South Main Street, this is where the medias were moved to the Midway Project. And we replace bonds with taxes as funding source. Tashiro Road Improvements, that has been removed because a project has been completed. And traffic signals has a budget adjustment because part of those ones have been moved to ATP sidewalk gaps. Voluntary Assessment District Phase One, Phase Two, Walnut Madrid Tap Bike and Pedestrian have budget to actuals amendments. Active Transportation Plan Sidewalk Gaps has increased. It has increased. Pavement Condition Index has a budget to actuals adjustment. The Brennigan Cultural Center Improvements, Municipal Services Center Transit, Solar Energy Photovoltaic Projects are all budget to actuals amendments. And the last three are Convention Center upgrades and maintenance with the Las Cruces Building Subroofing Convention Center Exterior Sign. They have been removed because the projects are going to be funded through operating accounts instead of capital accounts. And that concludes the CIP amendments. Any questions?
Thank you, Cynthia. We have Councilor Flores, Councilor Coran.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you so much for your presentation. Looking at all the work that you did in your capacity, reflected all the work that the city does in making improvements throughout the city. And I was just wondering, is, does the city in any way publish all of this? Because, you know, I think we, at least I, I haven't asked my fellow councilors and mayor, but I know the mayor and I get, because he's usually copied on my, or, and vice versa, as mayor. He gets all the email, usually all the emails. There seems to be a real disconnect, a large disconnect between what is perceived by the public and what the, what city actually does, with, you know, the administration. And, and I think it's very interesting to see just how much work, especially in public works. And that's where a lot of the, a lot of the complaints come in. And, and fortunately, well, that's another, I'll cover that later. But, but I was just wondering if the city would consider that, Mr. Peely? Maybe it's a public comments, but it's apropos of this presentation, which is so detailed and shows so much work that is being done throughout the city. If we could just, you know, submit it to the Bulletin or, or Las Cruces Sun News. I think it's, and that would go for other budget adjustments when they come up. Because I don't even think that our budget, when we go through all that work, you know, we meet for several days at a time, is covered. But I think that'd be, that's my recommendation, Mr. Peely. And, and thank you again very much for your work and your department. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Coran?
I did have a couple of questions, yes, please. Thank you for your presentation, but Sheryl, yeah, my questions are for you. One is the $100,000 for city councillor memberships.
Yes.
What is that? And I'm just asking because I am here and I don't know. I'm curious, that seems kind of steep for memberships to me, but I'm sure that there is something behind that.
Ms. Councilor Coran, that is the price that has been budgeted for that line item previously. Some of the examples paid out of that are the fees for New Mexico Municipal League, National League of Cities, South Central Council of Governments, International City and County Management Associations. And some of those fees are pretty steep. So you have generally used close to that full amount in the past years.
Okay, thank you. And then I actually have a second question on that same thing. And it relates to something that came up in public comment and something that's been under conversation here. The pay for a Muni Judge Two, a budget adjustment suggests that we are paying a Muni Judge Two. And I'm curious if we're paying a municipal judge currently who is not, so, I would assume that accepting this would mean that there would be money to pay a second municipal judge. But my question is more of the present, which is, I wonder if we are paying a second municipal judge or not? Because my sense is that they are not working.
Councilor Coran, from what I know, well, yes, the first question is, this is for the second judge. So we just want to have it in there so that if a second judge comes in, the budget will be there to pay them. I do believe, which someone from Municorp could probably answer better, but I do believe there are, I don't want to say substitutes, but there's another line item that pays for people acting when a judge is out. I don't know if anyone has a better, please, Efa.
This question is specifically for that second judge that we appointed, and he currently is not getting paid.
Okay, thank you, that's what I was wondering.
Yep.
Thank you. The first question, thank you very much for answering, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, there's Councilor Abeta.
Yes, thank you, and thank you for the presentation. It's kind of a follow-up question to that of the municipal court. And it may not be able to be answered right now, but I think would be helpful for my education as well with this, is the cost that we've been giving for the alternates versus that of, I know we have this line item budget for a second at 85, so I'm curious to see how much we've spent on those alternates as well throughout the year. So thank you, and thank you, Mayor.
Councilor Abeta, we can, I'm pretty sure we can get to those numbers pretty, pretty easily. Thank you.
Okay, any questions, members of the public? Okay, seen none, Christine?
This is on the motion to approve Resolution 23-052. Councilor Abeta?
Yes.
Councilor Graham is absent. Councilor Bencomo?
Yes.
Councilor Coran?
Yes.
Councilor Flores?
Yes.
Councilor Gondara?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Okay, item 8.2, Resolution 23-053, need a motion and a second.
So moved to Abeta.
Second, Bencomo.
Motion made by Councilor Abeta, second by Councilor Bencomo. And now it looks like Rocío Gómez will be presenting. So I'm sorry, we had this opposite here.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council members, Rocío Gómez, Budget Analyst. Today I'm bringing before you a resolution to accept three federal grants and four state grants. Public Works Department received a grant, a 22 East Mesa Roads and Drainage Grant for $100,000 from the New Mexico Department of Transportation. The funding is from the 22 Legislative Session for the Ongoing East Mesa Roads and Drainage Project. The funding will be used for road improvements, including utilities and flood control infrastructure in the East Mesa area. Next Airport received a 22 Airport Infrastructure Improvements Grant for $500,000 from the New Mexico Department of Transportation. This funding is from the 22 Legislative Session for the Ongoing Improvements at the Airport. The funding will be used to acquire land, right-of-ways, and install infrastructure improvements to the Las Cruces International Airport. Public Works Department received a 22 North Tauschord Boulevard Spruce Avenue Improvements Grant for $650,000 from the New Mexico Department of Transportation Aviation Division. The funding is from the 22 Legislative Session for Improvements at the North Tauschord Intersection. The funding will be used for improvements at the intersection of North Tauschord Boulevard and Spruce Avenue in Las Cruces. Next, we have MPO, who received an FY23 Federal Highway Administration Grant for $345,000 with a match of $58,000 for a total of $404,000. The Federal Highway Administration provides funding to the Mesia Valley MPO to implement the FY23 Unified Planning Work Program. They received another grant, MPO received another grant, an FY23 Federal Transit Administration Grant for $107,000 with a match of $26,000 for a total of $134,000. The Federal Transit Administration provides funding to Mesia Valley MPO to implement the FY23 Transit Planning Work Program. Parks and Recs Department received a recreational trails program, University Loop Trail Construction Grant for $413,000 with a match of $70,000 for a total of $483,000 from the New Mexico Department of Transportation. New Mexico Department of Transportation and the U.S. Department of Transportation Recreational Trails Program is providing funding for the city to construct the University Loop Trail from University Avenue to Idaho. Finally, Economic Development Department has received Local Economic Development Act, Electronic Caregivers, Inc. Grant for $1 million with a match of $235,000 for a total of $1,235,000 from the New Mexico Economic Development Department. Funding is to make capital improvements, expand and increase medical technology at the facility at 506 South Main Street, and in return, creating 770 positions by December 31 of 2027. Economic Development will monitor the positions until January 31 of 2029. With that, here are your options. I will stand for questions, along with Amy Basford from Grants and staff available from each department.
Thanks, Rocío. Questions? Members of the public? Seen none, Christine?
This is on the motion to approve Resolution 23-053. Councilor Abeta?
Yes.
Councilor Graham is absent. Councilor Bencomo?
Yes.
Councilor Coran?
Yes.
Councilor Flores?
Yes.
Councilor Gondara?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Okay, item 8.3, Resolution 23-054. Motion second. Motion made by Councilor Abeta?
Seconded by Coran.
Seconded by Councilor Coran. Leanne Demouch will be discussing.
Bring this up here. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. For the record, I'm Leanne Demouch, I'm your Finance Director. And before you is a budget adjustment for the Lowman Properties Phase Two. Give you a little bit of background, back in January 18 of '22, you as council authorized a reimbursement for the Lowman Properties landfill closure for utilities to do the work. That Phase One has been completed. It has a total cost of about $3.1 million. So now Utilities is in Phase Two. When we were putting the fiscal year '23 budget together, we adopted a budget of about $1.2 million, not in, you know, trying to anticipate what all the costs would be. But the costs have gone up, as you know, in all things. And so we are here today to bring you a budget adjustment for an additional cost of $1,662,800, $600. And this will hopefully complete the Lowman Property closure. And with that, these are your council options. And I have with me Mr. Carl Clark, who is the Deputy Director for Environmental Technology over at Utilities Department.
Councilor Flores and Councilor Bencomo, before we take questions, and just remind you, it's 110 acres. And $43,560 square feet times $10 a square foot comes out to $50 million.
Right, and how much did we pay for it?
Like half, half a million dollars.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's a point you want to make.
Oh, okay.
Great businessman that you are.
Councilor Flores and Councilor Bencomo.
Anyway, thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much, Leanne, for your presentation. And thank you, Carl, for your words prospectively. I received, either I, I was asked last week in person, or maybe an email, whether there had been more, what was it? That there had been some kind of a setback because they found that there were more, it was more, there was more contamination. Is any of that true? I, since I didn't hear it from Carl, I figured. It's just, you know, whatever.
Yeah.
Not true.
Yeah, Councilor Mayor Carl Clark, Deputy Director of Environmental and Technical Support at Las Cruces Utilities. That's incorrect. We did encounter more waste, we encountered more hazardous waste. So there was more tires, bottles, plastic bags, those kind of things. So, but we actually, it put us a month behind schedule because we did have twice the volume of waste. So we actually moved through it fairly quickly. We got a little smarter from Phase One to Phase Two. And so we brought in extra flip screens to screen out the waste. And so we moved, actually, what was estimated to be about $4 million, we did it for $2.6, $2.8.
$2.8.
So we pat ourselves on the back for that. And we're actually sampling today, the final cell has been cleaned as of last week. We're sampling, the materials are on there right now. And we'll get the test back later this week, or early next week. And I'm expecting it to be clean, as were the other cells. And so we'll file our plan with NMD, and they should give us a, a, a clear, yeah.
Clean bill of health.
Yeah.
Thank you so much, Carl. And I, again, you know, again, I have to focus on all the work that the city does. I mean, everybody, every department head is always at work. And I'm, I'm really impressed, as a city councillor, with the AAA service that we get when we need information. And I, again, would just beg departments to let the public know all the work that is done on behalf of our citizens, our residents. So, so that, that rumor is circulating out in District Six. And of course, I'm the punching bag, which I don't care. You know, I mean, I mean, I do care. I don't want to get bruised. But all kidding aside, I think it'd be great if we let our, our residents know and just have that out there for public, and then to avoid misinformation. So it is hazardous, but it's not contaminated.
Correct.
Hazardous because it's all that stuff, all that junk you found in there.
Mayor, councillor, the hazard was the asbestos cement that we found. And it basically comes from all eight... And it basically comes from all the roofing tiles that were thrown out there. Any kind of ceiling tiles they had asbestos at one time, flooring that got peeled off and was dumped out there pre-sixty-five, so.
But it's, is it contained?
It's hauled away to the South Central Solid Waste Landfill, out in Coralitos now.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we actually pull it out of the ground and then haul it off in the trucks. And now we're going to restore the train back. Actually, we're going to do some light prep work and reseeding for vegetation. And after the seeding's done, I'm handing it over to David Sadio too. Now take care of. Yeah, because Utilities doesn't do that.
Yeah, but, so how, and that's the other question I get. People in that area are very afraid of contaminants. Of course, the view that they're going to be losing, it's, you know, it's my fault, but it's okay. You know, I'm used to it. But, so how, moving forward, how soon do you think anything will be going up? Like in the next ten years, maybe?
Yeah, Mayor, councillor, that's up to the rest of the city, they already have the master plan. So as soon as they get the money together, they can move forward on it. I'll be out of there by the end of the month, more likely, so. At that point, like I said, I'm handing it over to Public Works, David Sadio, and he can maintain it.
You can blame David.
Yeah, and so.
But it moved, that moved very fast, though. So I think that's definitely something that's laudable, so thank you. Thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilor Bencomo?
Mayor, Carl last answered my question, I was going to ask about next steps and kind of did that, Carl, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Anybody, Councilor Coran?
I just also wanted to give a little thanks. I remember the presentation on the twentieth, eighteenth of January, it was like my second city council meeting, and there were a number of really cool trucks that you showed us pictures of that filter out bags of bread. And at the time, I thought like, wow, what have I gotten myself into, and also how cool. So thank you for bringing it around full circle, it's really great to hear how it's going and how well you all have accomplished that. The irony of us sending our trash for another landfill is not lost on me, but thank you again.
You're welcome.
Okay. Nobody else, members of the public? Okay, seeing on Christine.
This is on the motion to approve Resolution twenty-three dash zero five four, Councilor Beta.
Yes.
Councilor Graham is absent, Councilor Bencomo?
Yes.
Councilor Coran?
Yes.
Councilor Flotis?
Yes.
Councilor Gandera?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Excuse me, okay, item eight point four, Resolution twenty-three dash zero five five. Motion made by Councilor Beta.
Seconded by Coran.
Seconded by Councilor Coran. And Mr. Larry Nichols, Director of Community Development, will be discussing.
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor Miyakushima, members of City Council and City Manager, Larry Nichols, Community Development Director and City Building Official. The resolution we'll be discussing now is a resolution approving a nuisance substandard dwelling of a structure in need of abatement at ten forty-five South Main Street. This facility is at city limits of Las Cruces. It's so ruined, damaged, and dilapidated that it is deemed to be a menace to public comfort, health, safety, and peace, and is required to be removed. My presentation will show you actions that have been taken up to date, some site information, the statutory authority for us to consider this as a resolution, and also some photographs of the conditions at the facility. And then lastly, I'll discuss the options for your vote, and some information that I have learned just this morning that will be related to those options. This is site information, aerial map of ten forty-five South Main. It is zoned commercial, C-three, it's in the infill district, it's a lodging business. It's a motel and has been a motel for a number of years. Historically, it's considered to be contributing as it was built in nineteen thirty-six. And it does represent historical characteristic to the city of Las Cruces. I can remember when I was in high school, I would drive on my way to high school, and I remember seeing the Kilby Motel back many years ago. Here's the previous actions that we've taken up to this point. Diming the structure as unsafe and unsanitary premises. A notice of condemnation was posted based on the findings from site inspections on three different occasions. We inspected myself, I was one of the representatives of the inspection team, but they involved also certified electrical inspector, mechanical inspector, plumbing inspector, and also code compliance officers and the police department. As a result of those inspections, we wrote the certificate of occupancy. On eleven November of two thousand and twenty-one, that unsafe structure and stop work order was issued to the owner with citations asking for compliance. And then in January of two thousand and twenty-two, there was an application I discussed with the owner that the property needed to come into compliance. This was the previous owner from the owner that we have now. And they did submit an electrical permit, but that was denied because they did not submit any plans to the electrical permit, nor did they supply a licensed electrician that would perform those corrections. And then in February of twenty-two, the ownership changed of the motel. But we have, and at that time, we inspected again. And we asked, we asked that they come into compliance based on what we had inspected previously. But up to this point, no permit applications have been received for the corrective work, no plans have been submitted, no calls for inspections have been requested for work that may have been performed, nor has there been compliance activity. And then, so that continued from February through August, that we kept, we were hopeful that we would hear from the owner that those corrections were going to be made and come into compliance for safe and sanitary premises. No remedial work was done to correct the unsafe conditions during that time period. And then we received complaints from the tenants of those rooms. And along with the police department, code enforcement, and my inspectors, we went to see, address the complaints that were, we were asked to look at in terms of plumbing, electrical, and heating and cooling service. We found on the completion of those inspections on August the fifth that a condemnation order was in place to remove the occupants from unsafe and unsanitary premises. The owner was on-site during that time, he did have a member of his family that was working as an interpreter for our visit and explanation of the orders that were placed on the site. And we provided information of the inspection findings to him. The condemnation notice and findings were mailed to all property owners of the subject property. And the occup, on the August fifth, the occupants were relocated and the utilities were disconnected to prevent any occupancy of the, from the condemnation order. This is a summary of findings, facts, and recommendation. The facility is a substandard unfit for habitation or use and a hazard to public safety and welfare. That it is an unsafe facility due to fiscal condition of the living and sleeping rooms. That the certificate of occupancy be revoked. That the structure has not in substantial compliance with the municipal codes, building codes and regulating habitable occupancy. That the responsible party shall abide by all permitting requirements. That repairs or improvements to be made to abate the unsafe structure. And that the owner obtains a city of Las Cruces business registration. And those are things that we have done up to a point, more facts, if you will. And then under recommendation, that upon failure of the owner or any other interested party to comply with the order within thirty days of unsafe structure notice, the city Community Development Department may take whatever action is necessary to bring the property into compliance, including disconnect of utility service and/or demolition. I'm going to show you now some of the conditions that were at the Kilby at our time of our inspection. I've labeled these as blighted conditions. But I think you will see in some of these cases, they go beyond the title of blighted. Water lines were without backflow prevention. Why is that important? Without a backflow prevention device, the city's water system, entire water system, can be contaminated. The sewer overflow you see there was from the cleanouts indicating that the sewer lines were inoperative and that we have a backflow from the cleanout going on to the right. Restricted secondary access, emergency access. In other words, if there were something that, in one of the residential sleeping rooms and a person could not get out their front door, they would have no means of emergency escape. You see fire hazards there with flammable materials that are stacked nearly three feet high around the entire room. It was very hard to navigate within the room, dropping down to the next line. Inoperative plumbing, in most every case in the facilities, there was no drain provided for the sinks, the toilets were overflowing. They had placed a five gallon bucket underneath the sink. I am told by the person occupying that that was the correction that the owner had provided them for the drainage. The next one is the unsanitary shower stall that has mold and had dead rodents. It had a rodent infestation in the shower stall itself and not draining. And we had fire hazards piled, flammable materials. You can see there that there's very little passageway around the room. And then a sec, another fire hazard, flammable materials within the room. The other blighted conditions were primarily exposed electrical wiring. That first slide you see is a ceiling light that is hanging from the electrical conduit, electrical wiring, not from the support. In other words, that that wiring was to pull loose and those wires were to come in contact, there's very potential for a fire. The electrical wiring hazard to the service entrance of electricity to the main panel. Inoperative air conditioning, in fact, there was no operative heating or cooling in any of the rooms. And we see some of the exterior blight conditions on the exterior, moving down to the next slide. Most of the rooms that were there were being supplied by extension cords from the main electrical panel in the storeroom. You see there, there's about four or five electrical extension cord connected to one outlet. But all of that wiring was exposed to human touch, a person could very severely injure themselves. Additionally, the second slide is the same. What did we have in the rooms with the electrical? These are motel rooms, they're sleeping rooms, they're not apartments. But the tenants were making them apartments, they were moving in refrigerators, cooking stoves, microwaves, other appliances that had heavy electrical demand on them and would cause the circuitry to overload and possibility of fire. The next two slides show the structural failure in ceiling frame members. Nearly every room in the complex had ceilings that were deflected and bowed. And we found in a few cases like this, one photo where the structural member had dislodged from its support. And then we see in the last photograph, ceiling framing that has been patched, but not completely done. And you'll see that in the upper right-hand corner that one of those structural frame members is, has a fissure or a crack clear across it. Now, this is the statutory authority that we have. The reading of the ordinance comes from the New Mexico statutes under Article three eighteen-five. Dangerous buildings or debris removal and notice right of a municipality to remove and place liens upon the structure. Now, the way it actually reads is the governing body of a municipality may by resolution that find that a ruined, damaged, or depleted building, structure, or premises is a menace to public health, safety, peace, and may be removed by the municipality. The other ordinances that you see there, the structural authority, have to do with the building codes, the New Mexico Administrative Code, our safety codes here in the city of Las Cruces, and the International Building Code. I'd like to discuss with you now the options for voting on this item. A yes vote would mean that the project would move to demolition. A no vote would be deny that. The vote, amend vote, I wouldn't, I don't think that's available at all from this particular one. And then the table vote, and that's the one I want to discuss with you the most. Over a period of nearly ten months, we have been trying to work with the owner to gain compliance. And we had very little feedback or no feedback. And that's what compelled us to bring this before you as a resolution. As recent as this, and then the, when we posted the notice of condemnation, the owner hired an attorney. And then we were told by our attorney and by his attorney that any discussion from here forward would be done through the attorneys. So I did not meet with the owner again for that particular reason. Until this morning, and until last Friday. Last Friday, Assistant City Manager Enriquez met with the, on telephone conversation with the owner and discussed the project about this resolution today. This morning, I received a phone call from a contractor, general contractor, licensed contractor that I know, and he's in good standing with the state and with the city. And he said that he had been hired as the project manager to bring this project into compliance. And that he had hired a engineer or architect to do a cost estimate of what the cost would be for bringing the project into compliance, that we could have habitable occupancies for this room. That was welcoming news. Because none of us want to see this building demolished. But if we have no other option available to us, if we're getting no response on how it can be brought into compliance, it leaves us little other alternative. So the tabling option, I would think, would be something that we provide the owner a ninety-day period of time for the architect to develop his cost estimates on the repairs and bringing the facility to compliance for safe habitation. And at that time, see what we have to work with. And that concludes my presentation on ten forty-five South Main. And I and the code compliance and the legal department and the police department stand for questions you two may have for us.
Mayor Potem?
I think Councilor Bencomo, Councilor Flotis, and so.
Okay, Councilor Bencomo, Flotis, and Gandera.
Thank you so much, Mr. Nichols, for the presentation, I appreciate it. I do know, I think, the owner and the contractor had come up before to speak, so I definitely want to make sure they do, but I have some questions before they do. I was unclear about what you were saying here at the end in terms of if you were suggesting that we table for ninety days. My question coming into this today was really around the process. So if we move forward with this, perhaps, I know you said amending it doesn't work, but perhaps the amendment to it could be, if in ninety days, there is no new information given to remedy the situation, then we move forward with the original resolution? Is that, can you just talk about the process of how this would work? This is the first time something like this has come in front of me in my three years here, and so I'd like to understand that better.
And Mayor, and Councilor Bencomo. And Mayor and Counselor Bencomo, the options that I was mentioning were not necessarily recommendations, but trying to add clarity of what might be available to you for your And then I'll just cover them again quickly. This would be that this project moved forward to demolition. That's what the resolution is stating. The no would be to deny that. The reason I mentioned that the amendment would not be available because that would be talking to, saying that we would not be enforcing and complying with our building ordinances and codes. And then the table vote was to say we give the owner an opportunity to be compelled to bring information to us that would require, would bring the project into compliance. That's what we've asked for all along, but we've had no movement to that in the past.
Larry, if this moves forward, how, what's the enforcement mechanism that we have that tells the owner, you have X number of days to move towards demolition?
The Mayor and Counselor Bencomo, that would be the council's decision, the amount of time you'd want to provide. I would think 90 days would be the sufficient amount of time for what I'm told that they've hired an architect or an engineer to do the feasibility study for cost. What was also mentioned in that disclosure from the project manager to me this morning was that the feasibility study was to discover what would be the cost for doing these, bringing the building into compliance for habitable occupancy. Then if that was excessive or more than what they thought they should do, then it would be the look for an opportunity to sell.
Okay.
And then after that, he said it would be, they would have to determine their means of being able to demolish or have the city demolish. And if that happened, the city could demolish. We do have an estimate on the demolition cost. If that were to happen and the city were to undertake that demolition, then it would be, that cost would be filed a lien against the property for reimbursement.
Right. Thanks, Larry. This question may be for EFO or for the attorneys then. Sorry. I guess I'm just curious, and maybe even for Christina, I guess I'm just curious in terms, if we just table this, what's to say that then nothing happens for X amount of time as opposed to amending it for, or do we table it to a date specific? What is, I'm trying to figure out how to move forward that has, that continues to have teeth.
It's funny you bring that up because I was just asking EFO in anticipation of council bringing this up. What we were asking the city attorney to consider is if we were to amend it, to put, as Larry mentioned, 90 days. So I looked at this date, this February 10th, which is a Friday, so that we move forward with the condemnation, with the demolition, however, leaving it to, because we have to have a point person, I presume, and I would think it would be Larry, that if they've made substantial completion, then he can stop that demolition.
Yes.
That's what Jocelyn was looking up, if we were to just do that amendment. That way there, we don't come back. And it's there. It's, you know, and the only one who could stop it theoretically would be Larry, if we were to designate him as, you know, based on his professional opinion.
Right. If there was a sale, if there was sufficient plans to upgrade it, all of those kinds of things, yes, I think. I feel comfortable moving forward with that. I guess just procedurally, how does that work?
Well, what I'd like to do is, if I may, is let the other council.
Yes.
And then we'll come back.
Thank you. Well, let me finish then. I just have to say that this may be one of the hardest issues I have worked on as a city councillor for District Four, because the goal is never to displace people. There were six people, there were six people living here when Larry did his order. And the goal is never to displace people. The goal is never to tear down potential housing in the moment we are in right now, which is a housing crisis. And yet, I think, for me, what sort of spoke louder than all of that was that these were unsafe conditions. And not only for the residents living there who oftentimes have called to complain, but there was hundreds of calls, hundreds of emails coming in to me, to staff, to PD, to codes, to community development from the surrounding area, from the surrounding neighbors about how they were experiencing unsafe conditions. And I just, I couldn't turn a blind eye to that, right? And I, you know, I appreciate Officer Klimak and Officer Roach and his team for the conversations we've had around what this area really meant. And while this is one of the hardest things to do, I really feel like it's the right path. And I really want to work with folks who own properties like this. I've started doing that down West Pacacho, folks who own motels, who have become long-term living scenarios for people. Before we get to this point, I want to work with people so that they understand code, so that they understand what is healthy, what is livable, before we ever get to a place where we're putting this motion forward. I appreciate that the owner's here. I appreciate that he's showing up because it shows me that they do want to work on this. And I just wanted to note that, right, that I'm doing the best I can to work with folks in other situations like this to avoid ever getting here. But honestly, I'm also glad we're here because it shows that we're serious about quality of life for people. So thanks, Larry. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay. We have Counselor Flores, Gandera, and then Corran.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Nichols. Can you go back to the slide that shows all the efforts you've made over the?
Which slide, ma'am?
I don't know. The one that has the data that shows the steps you've taken, the timeline. Previous actions? Yeah. So the first date of entry of previous actions is November 2021, which is a year ago. And were there any other steps that were taken before that that you know of that aren't on this previous action slide?
Mayor and Councilor Flores, yes, there was, but the ones that were primarily, we were responding to complaints, complaints that were issued to us, and also the police department and to the code compliance division. So those were the main reasons for going to that site, but there were many. I think there were over 300 calls to that site.
Over the years?
Over the years.
Okay.
And then about 12 or 14 just prior to that November date that were related to facilities, not so much to activities with, on the person with facilities.
Okay. So what the amendment or a tabling, a tabling would be, not an amendment at this point, but a tabling would mean that they would be given 90 days to come up with a cost of repair or assessment, for lack of a better word? Or what is it that those 90 days would take care of? And say we tabled for 90 days, what would we have in 90 days?
Mayor and Councilor Flores, what we would want to see on that 90 day tabling endeavor would not be just to see a feasibility cost. We would want to say that the owner understood the cost to do this, and they came and applied for permits with licensed contractors to perform that work, present plans, permit application, plans for correction, and licensed contractors to do the work.
Okay. And then that would happen, that's all you'd be requesting 90 days, but would there be any requests to have any showing, a showing of feasibility of completing? And when would that be in terms of getting rid of all of these problems? And I mean, just to remodel a kitchen today, a small kitchen would cost probably $60,000. And if someone doing that would probably either have the money or take a loan, and the value of the house itself would probably pay for that remodeling, you know, whatever, kitchen, patio, whatever. In this case, I'm not sure that the value of the land, because we know clearly from the pictures we saw, that it seems like everything should be demolished. The whole thing seems to be a health hazard more than anything else in the world. It just, you know, especially the water lines and our city water potentially being contaminated as a result of the faulty care that has happened. And I'm not sure, I mean, I'm not a real estate person, but I would just say that preliminary, just from viewing it, that it would cost hundreds of thousands of dollars to repair, to replace. And I'm not sure that the value of the land would cover it. In other words, if they came in and said, this is what we want to do, and this is what we'll do in 90 days, I don't think it's going to happen. I don't think it's realistic. I mean, it takes 90 days. And then right now, I mean, people are facing all sorts of backlogs and delays and having parts of their homes remodeled because of shortages of materials. And this, these are people who are already in contractual situations, and they're waiting for their projects to be finished and their homes. So do you really see, Mr. Nichols, in your expertise, and after all these years of dealing with this property, do you really see that 90 days is going to accomplish? I mean, it'll accomplish, what will it accomplish in 90 days? And what happens with that property between now and then? Are there people who are going in and occupying the premises just to seek shelter? I mean, God bless them, I mean, but these are difficult times. And then will the city be liable for allowing people, I mean, for allowing this to continue? I'm looking at liability issues. If someone gets hurt and, heaven forbid, I mean, maybe the water, our water is already contaminated, and are we doing any testing on that? So I would vote to, today, to proceed with demolition. I think that there's been enough information gathered by the city. I think it's a health hazard all around. I don't think that the value of the property is going to take care of the remediation because it looks to me it would have to be totally, what's the word? Demolished. It would be a total demolition, and that in itself is going to cost thousands upon thousands, maybe $100,000 at least. So that's my assessment. Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. If I may, Councilors Gandera, Corran, and Abeta, let the two applicants that came earlier talk first, and then we can kind of formulate some of our ideas. Thank you, Larry. If you just want to stay nearby and then invite the two gentlemen that came up earlier? Yes, please. Basically, I guess what we're going to be looking for is what your plan was, how fast you think you can get this done?
Hello, members of council. My name's Alef Medina. This gentleman is Rosendo. He is the owner. I work for Merlin Enterprises for Mr. Manuel Solis. This gentleman came to us and approached us about the project. He understands at this point that the project either has to be brought up to code or demoed. So basically, what we are providing for him is to show him and give him an assessment as to what it's going to cost him to bring it up to code, and if it's even possible, because a group of engineers has to determine that. We don't. And so with that said, once we get a report from the engineers, then we can make an assessment like, okay, do you want to, do you want to fix this, or do you want to just demo? At which point, he's okay with doing demolition if he has to. We have a contract. He signed the contract with us on the first of November for the cost of the design, so that he knows what the cost is going to be. To do the demolition, you have to have blueprints. We can't just demo a building. So even to do the demolition, we're going to, it's going to require to submit blueprints.
Counselor Bencomo, did you have a question?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry, I know I'm cutting in front of folks. Thank you for that, and thank you for being here, Mr. Moreno. The reason I think this is fair ultimately is because Mr. Moreno bought the property in March, is that right?
Right. Yes, that is correct.
At the end of the day, he invested money into this property, and I think it's fair to give him an opportunity to assess the situation, given that we also get a commitment from him that he's going to secure the property between now and the end of February.
Well, he has no intention to sell the property, by the way. I don't know how Mr. Solis misunderstood, Mr. Manuel Solis being the owner of Merlin Enterprises. And so with that said, he knows, he understands the cost of the blueprints, what we have to do to bring this project to either demolition or compliance. But either way, he understands that he's going to have to carry that cost. And in the event that we have to do the demolition and we take down the building, then he's thinking of maybe doing somewhere housing, something new. And that's why we hire studio D architects.
Okay. Thank you.
Let me just ask him some questions, and then we'll get back to the councils. So he recently purchased the property?
Yes, in March.
Okay. So you've been inside the property when you bought it? How did it look when you bought it?
He showed me part of it. I didn't check everything exactly. He, you know, the rooms were with people, and he says, he showed me some good rooms. And I didn't really appreciate it, how was it exactly? And he didn't, he didn't show me the papers that he had already from the city. And another thing that I want to clarify, those pictures that you've seen, they're not exist anymore. The water line you see, you see, does not belong to the sewer. It's a water line from the water, the water in to.
Just old regular water faucet.
Yeah. And, you know, the windows, the windows I fixed in the back, I take it off the boards and I put glasses and everything. You guys can go take a look. It's not that, the thing that you guys see. That's horrible. It's, that's all, those pictures I've been showing to everybody, and I can invite you guys to see how the place. And, you know, I don't attempt to lie or to pass like, it's good. I know maybe there could be some mistakes, but still, there's no like that. It's terrible. And even maybe guys want to close, do it to the crime, but you know, when I get there, it was a lot of bad people. I almost evicted everybody from there, you know? I was trying to get a good neighbor, and, you know, I'm a, personally, I don't use drugs and nothing like that. I don't like that things. But I was trying to make a better place to live for the people, you know? Like, you know, like, I've been fixing a lot of things, like those facets, the facets were clogged, and the pipes were loose. I put it back and everything. It was a messed up with what I bought. And it wasn't, it was bad. He might be, has all that kind of people because he wasn't able to rent nobody because that, those conditions doesn't pass, doesn't pass to nobody, you know? I've been renting places to, like, to Community Hope, but they check my places, you know? They have a checklist to pass before they take him. The people sometimes do things after that, and I had to do something, but, you know, I know the requirements, the requirements. Even I have people with Section 8, and I know it couldn't be a better place. It's not a luxury place, but my place is, it's for livable places. It's not a luxury place, but my place is, it's for livable places. I feel so sad to see how they are showing my place, like, like I couldn't do much. I hired my attorney because I didn't know much.
Are you okay, sir?
Yeah. It's just that, I didn't know how, I feel like he didn't help me nothing. I hired to represent me. But I don't know, I just don't understand what's wrong.
Excuse me, sir. What is your last name again?
Moreno.
Moreno. So, Mr. Moreno, when did you purchase the property?
In March.
March. So, I was there this summer and I received a lot of complaints from a lot of the residents along Wyatt Drive. And they were all pointing to your, your property. Do you have anything to say about that? I actually visited that. The police department actually put up what they call an eye in the sky and kept, because they felt, and they confirmed that there was a lot of activity going on in that, in that building.
I was on the process to, on the process to kick them out, the people, the people tried to intimidate me with a lot of things when I, when I tried to, to kick them out. And they do a lot of wrong things against me. But I, you know, if you ask for my name everywhere, they know my name, I don't do nothing bad. I just, I just tried to, to make a better place.
Did you say you rent to the Community of Hope?
Yes.
And Section 8 of the Housing Authority?
Yes.
And they, you didn't report this to them so that they could quit sending you clients or pay, quit?
Well, what I, what I want to mean is that I'm trying to be on compliance with my places. This, this place was, was so bad when I, when I purchased it. And I've been trying to, to fix everything, to correct them. I don't know, like, like those pictures that you see, there does not exist.
Mr. Moreno, is it currently, is there people living in there now?
No.
When was the last time anyone has lived in there?
Ah, since when they disconnected.
So, you're assuring the council that no one's going to stay in there for at least the next 90 days? It'll, not a, not a one person's going to stay?
Nobody's there.
And if they do, what will happen?
No, then nobody should be there.
Okay. What, what can you, what can you provide to this council that you're going to get done in 90 days, whether you or this gentleman here? And I'm sorry, so your name begin with?
Alef.
You say it so fast.
I know, it's Alef. It's a kind of a weird name. It's the first letter of the Hebrew alphabet, Alef. So, basically, what we're planning to do, part of our agreement, is that we are going to board up the building to make sure that the property is safe for the community. Not only that, but part of my agreement on management is to work with him and visit the building often to make sure that people are not, you know, sitting and, you know, trying to find a place to stay. So, that's part of what we are going to do together, work together to make sure that, you know, no people are staying there, because obviously it's not safe. Part of it by obviously boarding up the building. The second part, by hiring Studio D Architects, they are going to provide, they, they are, they usually take about six to eight weeks to, to provide us with blueprints. And at that point, he'll decide if he, you know, if we can even do any repairs to the building, if it's, you know, if it's repairable, or if at that point, we just move on with demolition and new plans for a new build.
What I wanted to ask you is, so Studio D Architects, why you just can't, you just can't use other contractors to, to what it's going to take to bring up the plumbing, the electrical?
Well, they have to be, we need engineers, because we got to submit everything for review with the city, with the community development. And for that reason, we need engineers to come in, look at the structure, look at the mechanical, look at the plumbing, look at the electrical. And at that point, we decide what the cost is going to be to repair or if it's even repairable.
So, Larry, are you requiring engineers or are you requiring licensed contractors?
Mayor Larry Nichols, for the record. Is it commercial structure, sir? So, on commercial structures, we require a design professionals to submit the plans and then a licensed contractor to acquire the building permits.
So, if they bring back this information to you within 90 days, is that sufficient?
Mayor Larry Nichols, for the record. I believe 90 days is enough for them to do the design work. And I'm just now learning, as I mentioned earlier, today, some of this information just came to me as recently as this morning from the, from the contractor. Them offering to board and secure, that would assure that the building was not available to be occupied for unwanted entry or unwanted occupancy while these plans were being developed. And then, once they submitted the plans, we could see that they were addressing the compliance issues, the electrical plumbing and all, and then we could issue permits.
Can you speak a little bit louder? The clerk's not picking that up.
Mayor Larry Nichols, for the record. I was saying that once we, doing what we have learned this afternoon, that they've hired a, what I'm calling a project manager as a contractor. And once those plans are submitted, because it's a commercial structure, we require an architect, licensed architect or engineer for commercial structures, not so for residential. And then, we require licensed contractors and to do the work. Them offering to board and secure for this period, if we did go with the concept of a 90-day period, that's enough time for them to come up with the, with the design and the construction documents to submit for permitting.
Okay. So, all right, I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues here, Mayor Protam, Counselor Corran, and then Counselor Abeta.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Hillary, for, for your presentation. I have a couple of questions. How old are those pictures?
Mayor and Counselor Gondra, Mayor Protam, Gondra. The photographs were taken in, those photographs were taken in, in August the 5th. There were some other photographs that we had taken previously, but these were the most recent ones that we based our inspection findings on. And we posted the condemnation based on those.
Based on that?
Yeah, August 5th, '22.
And Larry, upon your inspecting, did you feel that that structure is structurally sound?
Mayor Protam, Gondra. There are basic components of the building that are structurally sound. I believe the foundation to be structurally sound from my inspection. Several of the walls, there are a few that are compromised, but not in entirety. But the roof structure is completely compromised. Nearly every ceiling in every room is deflected and sagging.
Okay.
And then, also in the carport areas, those are falling down, are deflecting, are cracked. Matter of time before there would be a failure.
Okay. And how many rooms are we speaking of?
There's 15 rooms for rental motel rooms. And then, there's the main structure, which is the office with the apartment above the main office.
Okay. And Larry, you indicated in Slide 7 that you had begun to work with the owner and then lost contact with him. You don't know why you lost contact with him? So, what gives me the assurance that this gentleman is going to continue to communicate with you?
Yes. Mayor, Mayor Protam, Gondra, Larry Nichols, for the record. We initially made several phone calls to Mr. Moreno. Mr. Moreno lives in Salem, New Mexico, which he has a trucking business up there and he runs, I think that's his residence. We contacted him, the code enforcement folks contacted him. We asked him to meet us on site so that we could go through all of these. A couple of times, he said he would show, he did not. But we continued and then he did come for the, for the August inspection and we met with him there. After that inspection, I was called by his attorney, Mr. Ortiz, telling me that he was the attorney for Mr. Moreno and that any further communication would be done through the attorney only, no direct communication with Mr. Moreno. And I complied with that direction.
So, from then on, did our attorney, and I see Brad out there, he is our attorney, I'm assuming on this case, and Jocelyn here, you're the attorney. Have there been contact with Mr. Ortiz from that point on?
Mr. Douglas actually did handle this and if you'd like to make a statement to that on behalf of legal.
Okay. Thank you. I'm just trying to establish that if we're going to do this 90 days, that he's going to continue to contact you, through you, from attorney to attorney? And how difficult does that make it if Larry needs to have specific conversations? Or are there going to be an allowance made to have Mr. Nichols and the project manager have conversations easily, you know?
Correct. Mayor, Mayor Protam, counselors. So, I can tell you that I have knowledge that there has been communication with my office, with Mr. Herman Ortiz, not me personally and not Ms. Garrison, but there has been communication. I do know that. Perhaps it might be better, and this is just a recommendation, certainly with regard to a represented person, it's always best practice for an attorney to communicate with counsel that represents this individual. However, there are always exceptions to that. For example, if Mr., and I apologize, Moreno, if Mr. Moreno's attorney gives permission, then Mr. Nichols could communicate directly with Mr. Moreno, but that would have to come from Mr. Ortiz. Otherwise, it would be either myself or Ms. Garrison communicating with Mr. Ortiz.
So, I guess what I'm concerned about is within, if we say, okay, we approve the 90 days and we're clear about the communication, I don't want anybody coming back saying, well, we haven't been able to get ahold of the attorney's office or, Mr. Nichols, I don't want that kind of lack of, or miscommunication. And so, I need some assurances that that won't happen in the event that we, that we pass this. Since I have you here, I know how clear, and Larry, you mentioned the municipal code here, but there's also state law that trumps much of this and I want to, and property ownership is like one of the most important, right, things that we have. And so, there's no, I want to make sure that the city has done everything that they can to uphold the laws, both local and state, as it relates to people's property. And so, I know that our codes, when you talk about 300, over 300 calls over the course of years and years, and then the number of things that occurred here, you know, to assist making sure that the property comes up to code, this is very serious, very serious. And, you know, looking at the pictures it brought back to mind, my work in the child welfare arena, this is stuff that I would go into. And it's a very serious thing, living in substandard conditions. And so, if you're telling me today that I'd go visit, that I'm not going to see the rooms like this anymore, that's what you're saying, sir? Okay. So, what do you recommend, I'm circling back, Brad, around the communication specifically, that it's clear that we know that you're the point person to Mr. Ortiz and that at which time would Mr. Ortiz, I guess, give permission to allow Mr. Nichols to have those conversations?
Sure. And I don't know if I ever said my name for the record, Acting Deputy City Attorney, Brad Douglas. Those are excellent questions, Mayor Protam. So, what I can tell you is that with regard to the interactions between state and local laws, I have been monitoring this process with input from Mr. Nichols. And I feel very confident that at this point, we are compliant with the state and local law, very confident in that. With regards to communication between, you know, with a represented person like Mr. Moreno is, that's a valid concern. What I can tell you is that I know Mr. Ortiz, I've known him for a number of years. He's, he's a busy attorney. And what I can tell you that myself or Ms. Garrison can and will do is that we can make efforts and document those efforts, because I'm sure that it's not a far-fetched possibility that 90 days or something like that from now, you may be asking a question, what efforts were made to communicate? All we can do is document those efforts. I cannot make you a guarantee that communication will be effective. The only thing I can guarantee you is that we will document every effort to communicate with this represented person's counsel of record.
I appreciate that, Brad, I really do.
Mayor Protam, I think Jocelyn had...
Oh, sure. Sorry.
If we could also just verify with Mr. Moreno whether you are actually still represented by Mr. Ortiz.
Ask him, Mr. Mayor, ask him why.
So, the question was asked by Counselor Florida. We need you to speak to the microphone.
Yeah, I sent him a text messaging. He answered me and that's, that's the reason that...
What did he say when he answered you?
Asian, about it. That's why, I don't know what, I've been trying to do other, like, I tried to hire an inji, electrical engineer to start with the process before. And his name is Jim Tester. And he tried to speak with Mr. Larry, but Mr. Jim Tester told me, he couldn't, he didn't talk to Mr. Larry, do it, because everything has to be through their attorney. And I sent the, I sent the number of the attorney, I mean, of the engineer to my attorney to learn of him, to try to start to do something, but I never had any answer from him. I just been waiting to see if he's gonna, if we gotta wait for an audience or something. I don't know nothing. That's why I couldn't do nothing before, because I don't know how, what the process has to be or... Now, after, the other day, we had a court, on the municipal court, and I met my lawyer and it was regarding other things before, before, to the same thing. And he just posted to make, to give a proof that we are correct in everything. But after that, I didn't know nothing, what's the next about that? And I tried to tell him that I'm going to represent by myself, I tell him, I feel like you're not helping me with nothing. I've been discussing other situations by myself and I've been, I've been solving better than you helped. And he says, no, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna help you. You still have more courts. You have to represent, need representation like on the district court and then, and then other courts, like, those are things that I don't really know exactly.
Okay, Mr. Moreno, thank you for that.
I appreciate that. That's exactly what I'm talking about, is, is very concerned about moving on the 90 days without it being very clear, kind of... days without it being very clear what kind of communication is going to, to move, and meanwhile, the ti-, the time is ticking. And so, I, I, the other, last question that I have is for Larry, related to the cost. I mean, you've been a contractor, I know you've, you've had to do work in commercial buildings and, and for demolition. Can you give us sort of an estimate of what we're looking at?
Yes, Mayor and Councilor Protem, Gondra, Larry Nichols for the record. I did ask for a estimate for the demolition from one of our vendors that are signatory with the city, Sandoval Construction by name. They provided an estimate. It was not a bid, and it was not a three passing for three.
Sure.
It was just a preliminary estimate. The estimate that they provided was, I believe, 159,000 for the, for the demolition. But I need to stress, that is a, an estimate, it's not a formal.
I, I understand completely. Now, in terms of the rehab and for, you know, to bring everything up to par, Larry, did you have any ideas as you were going in, what that might look like?
Mayor, Councilor.
I know I'm putting you in a position.
No, Councilor Gondra, Larry Nichols for the record. I won't speculate on that. I, I do know this, that the entire electrical system will need remediation and replacement, the entire plumbing system, the entire mechanical system, and several of the structural components of the building.
Okay.
Will need to be brought in, brought into.
Compliance.
Compliance.
Yeah.
I suspect that will be six figures, mid-six figures. I might, I can't put a number on it.
Yeah, no, I appreciate just hearing that. I, I, you know, I, I just, again, want to stress how serious this is. Over the years, that has been a sore thumb, honest, and I'm being very nice. It, it has been a big issue, it, we still get some calls with people loitering in there and whatnot. I, I frequent some businesses in that, in that area, and have heard from, you know, business owners concerned about it still being upright. I, I, I don't, is it fenced in all the way around at this point?
Mayor and Councilor Gondra, it is not fenced in at this time. There are doors that are, are locked, and there are windows that are not accessible because of their configuration, they're like 12-inch square frame, metal frames. But several of the windows are broken out now. But they, it would be very difficult for someone to access those rooms. But it needs to be, if we are going to consider continuation through a tabling effort, it needs to be boarded and secured and maintained secured until we can come to a decision.
Boarded and secured, are you talking fenced all the way around?
Fenced and the rooms and windows boarded.
Now, do we still have the camera out there?
I'm uncertain, ma'am.
We do. Was that Officer Klemic saying, yes, ma'am? Okay, thank you, Officer Klemic. Okay, all right. Yeah, I know this has been really difficult for everybody around, and police are out there often, I don't know if it has settled any, but I know that, that they're here in force, ready to be, you know, to put out their information if they like. I appreciate you sitting here through that. I know this has been really difficult for you all, for that community. I mean, I have a lot of compassion, and I want to be able to see, you know, the, the property owner, you know, move forward. I just, I just think that, you know, it's not going to take 90 days, and, and I want to see a, a valiant effort be made to rehab and, and make that livable for, for people because, because of just the dire need that we see around affordable housing, but.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, so I know you're surprised that Section 8, that they receive Section 8 vouchers and stuff, and I knew that, you know, for many years, that is what has happened. I, I don't know, I often get concerned about, about that, because, you know, we saw the conditions that we see, and but that's what's happening in our community today, is that many of our people are living in substandard housing, and it's not okay. And so, I, I just want, you know, Mr. Moreno and others to know that we really need to increase, you know, our housing stock, but, but, but the quality, the quality and, and of it as well. So, with that, Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you.
Yeah, I was just going to say, thank you, Mayor Protem. First off, the reason I was surprised is because Section 8 really is strict on who they're going to let before they start making payments. I mean, they're, they have a really a long list. But there is something to think about, my colleagues here, we could theoretically table this for two weeks until they can get everyone that they supposedly weren't able to get, so that they can come here and tell us in two weeks what they're going to do. That way, there, there's no miscommunication. If they have a lawyer, they need to show up and explain to us what they're going to do, or, or the contractors. I guess what I'm trying to get at, is this is the first time I've met, seen these gentlemen. So, if, if, you know, of course, that's the will of council, if you want to do that, if you want to just move forward with this, or if you want to at least just table it for two weeks so that they can come back and have the same discussion here, where this will still be on the agenda for demolition, but in two weeks, but you, you'll have someone here, so that, you know, that's two weeks to, to get ahold of them, let them know how serious this is. Something to think about. Okay, so we have Councilor Corran, Abeta, Flores, and Bencomo.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols, thank you for being here. I'm going to be even less nice than Mayor Protem Gander, who I think was actually really nice. To be perfectly frank, Mr. Moreno, in my view, an estimation, you purchased this place when it was substandard, you did little to improve it. It doesn't give me faith that you will do anything to improve the lives of the people who are going to live there in the future. You look like a businessperson who is trying to make money off of the poor folks, and I would say that's exploitive, and I don't have a particularly large sort of heart for that exploitative nature. To be perfectly honest, I would vote for demolition today, and, or the mayor's model, which would go toward giving you two weeks to have your attorney present. I don't believe it, I believe it's, I don't believe that it is possible to rehab this space in any way that would be economically feasible, and I think it's a hazard to the community. And so, I would like to just point out, if we do do a, a tabling, how seriously I take this type of abuse of our community, which I perceive it as. And I understand you've only been the owner for eight months or six months, but in good, in good faith, you could have made improvements in that time, and by, by what I see, you didn't. And so, for me, it's really pretty clear in the situation that I don't have trust in you to be a steward of this process. So, my only question would be, if we do table it for two weeks, what the expectations would be when we come back, and, and what the conversation would be at that time?
Thank you, Councilor, Councilor Abeta.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you. I'm also in favor of tabling for just the two weeks with, I would hope that the expectation would be to make sure that both parties are properly represented when they come back, that any sort of language interpretation that might be needed is available, and that there is a plan, including a financial plan, on how this property would be remodeled or rehabbed, if that is the case. But I'm also inclined to think that this property now probably is beyond that sort of capability, at least from a cost standpoint, and would, I anticipate that it'll probably have to be demolished. But I am willing to wait the two weeks and to get those proper assessments first. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Flores.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm really not in favor of tabling this for any amount of time, and I'll tell you why. Because, as, and I totally agree with everything Councilor Corran stated. You've had since March, señor Moreno, ha tenido desde marzo para tomar pasos para remediar esa situación. You've had enough time to take steps to remediate the situation, and you have not done anything. For us to think that the value of that property is going to cover the cost of demolition, the cost of, you know, you, because me, I'm saying demolish. There's been enough ample time between March and now. For your attorney not to be here, it means that there's been a lack of communication, which is just a by the, you know, just by the by. But I don't think that we're going to accomplish anything in tabling it for two weeks. We have, our calendars are set to hear certain issues, and I think that it's very generous for my colleagues to even think that two weeks will make a difference. I don't think that two weeks is going to make a difference. It's not going to make a difference as to the history and the lack of, the lack of having taken any steps, and even now, this, this property isn't secured. So, I, I, in some ways, I feel for you, but in others, I think that you've been a, you've been a terrible landlord in, in every respect. So, I don't think it's going to change. I don't think that, unless, you know, you're, yeah, I mean, no, I, right now, I'm inclined to vote yes to approve this resolution and move on. Two weeks is not going to make a difference, and I don't think that, I think it was very, Mr. Moreno, I think it was very, I don't think, very dishonest for you to say that the conditions of that property have improved, and that they're not as bad as we saw them to be. I mean, and you, if you are in fact a builder, contractor, whatever, you're either very naive, or you're trying to pull a fast one on this council. And I just don't, I, I just don't see anything really moving forward, and I would vote yes to approve today, right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Bencomo.
Thanks, Mayor. Señor Moreno, quería hablar directamente con usted. Mira el problema que yo tengo, yo represento este distrito. El problema que yo tengo es que usted dijo que quiere ser un buen vecino. En el último año he recibido tantas llamadas y correos electrónicos de los problemas que ocurren en su hotel. A lo cual, el vecino que usted tiene en el Bruce Motel, es raro a la vez que policía tiene que ir al Bruce Motel. Ellos tienen un concepto de negocio, lo manejan muy diferente a como lo maneja usted en el Kilby. Es raro a la vez que la policía tiene que ir al Bruce Motel. Al cambio, al Kilby, la policía tiene que ir, ha tenido que ir constantemente. Hay problemas de, me han dicho problemas de violencia, de drogas, de prostitución que hay en el Kilby, y yo entiendo que esto es difícil para usted. Vino y nos dijo que es difícil, que su abogado no le contesta, y yo entiendo que esas cosas son difíciles. Pero a la misma vez, usted es dueño de negocio, y tiene que tomar cierta responsabilidad por lo que pasa en su negocio. Mi papá también es, tiene casas que renta, y yo sé el nivel de, de tiempo y de energía y de dinero que se toma para, para poder darle una buena vivienda a alguien, y eso es lo que yo quiero ver. Y ese es el problema que yo tengo, que usted viene y nos dice que esas fotos no son la verdad, pero esas fotos fueron tomadas en agosto. Y yo, bueno, a lo mejor no vamos a estar de acuerdo en esto, pero la realidad no solo son las fotos, es muchas cosas más. Y yo por eso, y yo le quiero dar una oportunidad de que remedie unas cosas, pero igual que mis compañeras, no sé si tengo esa confianza. Y espero que 90 días, ya obvio, ya está trabajando con alguien, yo por, yo no quiero que regresen dos semanas otra vez. Ya les damos a los 90 días, y en 90 días trae un plan de lo que quiere hacer usted.
Christine told me to translate, I'm not sure I'm going to translate all of that, but I basically just noted that he is a business owner, and he needs to take responsibility for his business. That I've heard that he wants to be a good neighbor, yet that is not the case with the complaints I get. The Bruce Motel, which is right down the street, hardly ever, any calls to PD go to the Bruce Motel, which is very similar to the Kilby, yet the Kilby has consistent complaints about violence, property damage, prostitution, drug use, drug sales, and so, it's, it's just very problematic, and he needs to take responsibility for the kind of business that he's running. I'm also not in favor of coming back in two weeks. I think he has hired someone that is, has a plan in place for the next 90 days, and I think if we need to, whatever this resolution looks like, with a 90-day timeline, I am comfortable moving forward with that.
Okay, just, just for your information, looks like the city attorney was contacted by, I presume, Mr. Ortiz wanted to know if he could come down, and that's when, you know, I thought, well, if we're going to do the two weeks on the 21st. And the whole purpose of the, of the 21st, or the two weeks, was if Mr. Moreno, and I don't, you don't have to say how much you paid for it, but let's just use a figure of $100,000, you know, and to have that demolished, that you would actually have to pay for the demolition too. So, that's another 100, 150,000, that's $250,000. I guess what I'm trying to say is, you know, you know, I was willing to, to, to give you that two weeks notice so that you can, you know, understand this is serious, and we're trying to get this thing resolved here, and we need a commitment from you. But I can't make a motion, it's up to my colleagues, I can second it, but I can't make a motion. If they want to table it to go to November 21st, and someone's going to have to say it, if not, and they want to call the question, and it's going to be demolished in 90 days if you don't get it fixed, it's really, those are the two options.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I think if the attorney has called to get in contact with you, I don't think we need two weeks to, they can just now be in contact moving forward for the next 90 days.
So, you want to just move forward with this? Is that what you're saying?
I do, actually.
We should vote on.
With a 90-day timeline, that in 90 days, something, either a plan for.
Well, then you need to amend, you want to amend this?
No, no, no. Larry has made. Larry, didn't you make it clear that to vote for, option four, to vote for, to table, would give 90 days? Is that the 90-day purview?
Yes, Mayor and Councilor Flores, that is correct.
Yes, so I, so at this point, there'd have to be a motion to go for one of the options.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, Larry Nichols for the record. If, if it were, the decision were to come to demolition, it would require a demolition permit. A demolition permit requires review by the Building Department, the Utility Department for disconnection of, of the utilities, and a review by the Historical Preservation Committee. And they would come back with a recommendation to council as well on the demolition, based on the fact that it is a contributing historical property. So, but that should not influence, just you should know that those would be the processes for demolition through the permitting process.
So, just, sorry, just to clarify, if we vote yes, all of those things will still happen?
Yes.
And if we vote to table, all of those things will happen after 90 days, or not?
Table?
After 90 days, and then we'll start that process.
Mayor and Councilor Corran, that's very, that's correct.
Okay.
If you vote today to approve this resolution, then it will go to requiring a demolition permit, and those three items I mentioned to you will come about. If you vote to table for 90 days, and the table for 90 days is just to get the construction documents to enable permitting to start the corrections. The corrections are going to take probably eight months, maybe, maybe a year to accomplish. We won't know that until the decision is made to, to move forward with the rehabilitation or the re, bringing it into compliance.
Mayor, then why are we saying 90 days? Then can we just table for 60 days? Why not? I thought 90.
No, you, the council can amend however they see fit, really. But, but it sounded like Larry said that if we were to move forward with yes, and if something substantial was to appear in 60 days, then I guess you could let us know, and we could, or you, you have the authority to call it off?
Yes, by city charter, Mayor, by city charter, the building official has the authority to make those.
Yes, that is my understanding as well.
So, okay, if, as long as everyone's clear, I just wanted to make sure he was clear about it, but I think. about it, but I think they are. So that still gives them, you can do it concurrently then. They'll be working to get what they need to have done. They can get with the attorneys, they can do everything they need to do, and, but the clock is ticking.
Yes, sir.
Then I need for someone to call the question.
Mayor and Council, if I may, we just had one other issue come up that I just wanted to note, just that Mr. Ortiz did confirm that he does represent Mr. Moreno, and that he is saying he was not provided notice, I believe, Community Development. It just says to notify the owner, and so I think we complied with that, but if you take that into account as far as.
When, when was he notified?
There's a document in our thing that's, that's addressed to Mr. Ortiz.
Okay.
So just to clarify, there is a document that's addressed to Mr. Ortiz already, so.
There is?
Yes.
How do you know?
It says to Mr. Ortiz, it's in your packet. It's on page.
What's the date?
I don't know what the date is.
Well, it's very important.
It's the copied one from the city, Notice and Order of Appeal on August 5th. I don't see the date.
But is it about today's hearing, or today's meeting?
Mayor, I think that it's.
So, just to clarify, sorry, we do have a document that suggests that the attorney of the client has been notified.
Right. Just to let, just to let you know that his, Mr. Ortiz's response is that they did not receive notice and that they would like to be here on behalf, and they're requesting to appear telephonically or to appear at any other future meeting.
He wants to appear telephonically now?
Yes, I believe that's the request, Councilor Flores.
Well, first of all, this is.
Okay, so let me just circle back to what was asked by Councilor Corran. If we move forward, then that doesn't mean that it can't be stopped. If there is substantial completion, if they work in, work in unison with what Community Development wants, Larry then has the authority to stop it. So with that in line, I don't see why we couldn't move forward with number one, knowing that they can still continue to do what they need to have done, get the information, everything within 90 days, and, and if they choose to move forward, then, then he can stop it. If they, if they come back within 90 days, they come back with a contract, says it's going to cost $100,000 to renovate it, and Mr. Moreno says, okay, we want to do it, they have a signed contract, there's something, the proof that Larry wants, he can probably stop it. Sounds reasonable. I just need someone to call the question.
If I, if I may say something.
No, yes.
I'm sorry, Councils, I left Medina again for the record. If I may say something, what the gentleman actually wants is to be able to, if we are going to move forward with the demolition, he wants to be able to do the demolition and hire us as a contractor to do the demolition if it comes to that. And that's why we need those documents from the architect, because an architect is going to map out what we need to do to do that demolition. So if we are going to demo, or if for some reason this comes to a decision that he makes, that he wants to demo the building, at that point, we are going to submit a plan for demolition, which will include an asbestos report, it'll include a SWEAP, numerous things that you need for that particular permit, if it comes to that.
Well, I would have to say that would probably go to Community Development, so we.
Right.
Yeah, we don't choose if you're going to do it or not.
No, no, right, right, right. But we're saying from the owner, he would hire us to do the demolition. If the engineer gives us a report that the building is no longer repairable, at that point, then we will decide, he would decide, okay, let's go ahead and demo the building, and Studio D Architects will provide us with the new build, what he's planning to build on top of that instead.
Yeah, okay.
So that would be, to me, 60 to 90 days is plenty of time. I spoke into Mr. Jason Clark, the owner, the owner of Studio D Architects, and he says he needs anywhere between six to eight weeks.
So it seems like you're okay with this, then, if we were to say, move forward, because that gives you up to 90 days, which is three months.
By that point, I, I would, we will have a set of blueprints and ready with the plan for Mr. Nichols for the city, whether we move forward to restore the building or we demo. That's really what's on the table.
And if you move forward with restoring it, then I'm sure he's going to require some certain things to.
Exactly. Well, we will have a, we will have a set of, you know, a set of blueprints.
Well, as long as you're, I was just wanting to make sure that you and Mr. Moreno were clear.
Yeah, he understands, and what he wants to do, he knows that the value of the property is going to be less than the money that he's going to put into it, but he is aware of what he, anything that he builds on top of the property, it's going to have a lot of value. So he does not want to get rid of the property. He wants to keep the property. If we go to demolition, if we have to demo that building, then we're going to have Studio D design something, some sort of nice housing for this, for this property.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
Councilor Flores?
Mr., thank you, Ms. Mayor. Mr. Nichols, didn't you say that if, if we vote yes to approve, it means we're voting to demolish?
Mayor and Councilor Flores, that is correct.
Okay. That being said, you would take all the necessary steps to begin the demolition process, and in that process, you're going to get all the information that justifies or doesn't justify the demolition.
That is correct.
And how long does that process take?
Normally, Mayor and Councilor Flores, normally demolition permits, after they submit their documents that, that they were just presented to you, which is a set of an application, a permit application of demolition, and then the drawings of how they're going to accomplish that with environmental control, utilities, building, and site disposal, and those items, and the permits issued. The process to get the permit is probably seven days, seven to 10 days.
Okay. And based on your assessment, it is, and your expertise, you've been doing this a lifetime, no, not lifetime, certainly my lifetime, no. You've been doing this for many, 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 many years, and.
That's a lot of minis.
Well, because, excuse me, you are very well experienced in this field, and, and your assessment is that it's definitely a candidate for demolition, is it not?
Mayor and Councilor Flores, I have two levels of thought on that, one based on fact and one based on conjecture. The fact is, it's going to be expensive to, to bring this building into compliance. The conjecture is, I would like to see the building brought into compliance. That's been my whole effort from the, from the very beginning, but it's the ability of the owner to do that, and that's my, that's my concerns. We, we're, I didn't leave out one thing on that demolition process. It might take more than the seven to 10 days because the project will be presented to a Historical Preservation Commission, which meets monthly, so it may be as many as 30 days for that to be completed. But to answer your question, based on my years of experience in architecture and in building, can it be done? Yes, I can. Is it, as Councilor Gondra mentioned, is it financially feasible? That would be a decision for the owner.
As far as the historical society determining, if it were to determine that it is an historical building, then there's a lot of other hoops to jump through to make sure that it's restored. Look at what we have with Amador Hotel.
Yes.
And, and that would be beaucoup, a lot of money. So if it's determined to be an historical site, it'll cease to be his will as to what becomes of that property. And so that's something that he has to be made aware of as well.
Mayor and Councilor Flores, that's absolutely correct, and that, I, the recommendation from the Historical Preservation Commission will be a recommendation to the council. It would still be your decision what the outcome is.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Corran?
I just, I just really want to clarify something, because actually, something that you mentioned sort of made me uncomfortable, that maybe we don't totally understand the stakes of what's happening here. So if the, if we vote yes today, this is not that the city takes over the property, this is not that it's our thing. It would only mean it's in order to demolish, and the city could do that through a contracting process and through this kind of elaborate approval process. If we voted to table this, and, and it came back in 90 days, and all that information was gathered, and the owner decided that demolition was the thing, he would be able to determine how it is demolished, and then.
No, that's what he was saying. That's why all this takes blueprints, that's why it takes an architect. An architect will communicate and go through the necessary channels to be able to determine how we're going to demo, if we can demo, or if we, if we do bring it up, restore the building, the things that are going to make that building look like it used to before, give it some new modern look, but at the same time, bring it, you know, give it, keep its history. So what I mean by that, if you guys want, and your decision is to demo that building, he would like, he would still have to hire an architect, get those blueprints, get them submitted to the, to the, to the city, and then take care of the demo. So at which point, he's, he's aware of it and he's okay with it, you know, he understands that regardless, if you guys decide to demo, you know, he's going to have to hire, we're going to have to go through the proper, through the process, to go through the review, to make sure that the demo is done properly, because you can't just demo a building, as you guys know, there's, there's the proper channels that you got to take to be able to demo, to demolish a building, especially a building that old, because now we're dealing with asbestos, we may be dealing with, dealing with other things that we have to contain, and that all generates costs, and he knows that. So based on that, you know, it's our job to give him an assessment of what's going to cost him completely, with blueprints, permits, and demolition of, you know, to take the building if it comes to that.
So that's what would happen if we voted yes?
Yes.
So we, the city would have nothing to do with the actual demolition?
I mean, he would like the opportunity to demo the building himself. That's one of the things that we wanted to make sure you guys are aware of, that he is not putting that responsibility on the city. He's aware that he has to carry that cost.
Okay, that's, I guess, what I was curious of getting clarity on and understanding.
Mayor?
Council, we can work with, within that process. This is just to approve the demolition, but throughout this process, once we get the demolition permit, and Larry, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but you, you have the authority to determine, we would go out, we wouldn't do it ourselves, meaning technically, we wouldn't go out with our own employees, we would contract as well and go through that process, and then lean the property with that cost, and so we could work through that, through this process that we already have in place.
Okay.
Mayor and City Manager, Billay Nichols for the record. That's correct. What we would do, we would put out requests for bids, and we would get three bids, and then we would, that bid would be, the lowest responsive bid would be selected, the demolition would occur, and then we would file lien on the property for the cost of demolition. The city itself would not do the demolition, we would have a licensed contractor do that.
But we'd be responsible for the timeline, the other approvals and other things versus the owner being responsible?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to get clarity around what a yes vote means. I call the question.
Okay. Christine?
This is on the motion to approve Resolution 23-055. Councilor Beta?
Yes.
Councilor Graham is absent. Councilor Bencomo?
Yes.
Councilor Corran?
Yes.
Councilor Flores?
Yes.
Councilor Gondra?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Okay, item 8.5, Resolution 23-056. Need a motion, second.
Motion.
A motion by Councilor Beta.
Second.
Second by Councilor Corran. And it looks like Larry is still up there.
Larry Nichols for the record, Community Development Director. A Resolution 23-056, a resolution approving nuisance, substandard dwelling or structure in need of abatement at 1245 West Van Patten Street within the city of Las Cruces that is ruined, damaged, dilapidated to become a menace to the public comfort, health, peace, or safety, and required to be removed. Again, I will have a few slides here to show you the action that we've taken on this property and its present condition, and then a recommendation for explanation on the approval process. Slide information, this is an aerial map of 1245 West Van Patten. You will see, this is the structure right here that I'm highlighting with the cursor. This was taken about, I think, two to three months ago by aerial photography. The entire roofing structure and all has been fire damaged. There have been two fires on this property, but the most recent one was about three months ago. The occupant of the structure was Mr. Hernandez, he is the son of the owner, Ms. Lorraine Hernandez. He was actually residing in this portion of the damaged structure. We went and inspected and did a site assessment and determined that it was unsafe for habitation, and we asked him to, that the certificate of occupancy be revoked. And we actually, the fire department actually had to transport him the day of that inspection to the hospital, that he was in need of medical care. What was happening, he was living in this portion, and he was using an extension cord from his neighbor to, to run the electrical lighting just in this, this part of the property. The property has structural failure to a great extent, there's electrical hazards, inoperative plumbing, impeded egress from rooms and the general debris surrounding the perimeter of the facility, and you see some of that debris scattered around this So the action taken was determined to be unsafe structure. We posted notice of condemnation, we revoked the certificate of occupancy. In October of 18, was the first fire report. Then again in 2021, there was second report of fire damage, structural integrity was compromised, and in June of '21, unsafe structure revoke of certificate of occupancy was posted on the premises. In August of 2022, we met with the owner on site to provide inspection findings. We attempted to do that a number of times, but we were able to accomplish that in August in posting of the notice of condemnation. The Code Enforcement, City of, the Code Enforcement Division has been to the property with 10 or 12 times, been to the property twice myself. The 20 and 2022 of October stop work order, that stop work order was not in relation to the condemnation, but work was being accomplished without permit. The owner was attempting to demolish the structure himself. He basically, that was a big concern for us, because he was doing that demolition with a wheelbarrow and a sledgehammer with a friend of his, and at any point in time during that, that activity, the building could have collapsed on them. So we went and we stopped that activity and told him that he would have to apply for a demolition permit with the city to have a licensed contractor to do the demolition. And again, a summary of the recommendations I mentioned earlier about the unfit for habitation, the physical frailty of the building, the revoke of the certificate of occupancy, and it's not in substantial compliance with our municipal codes and our state codes, and that, that basically the failure of the owner or other interested parties to comply with the order. We said within 60, or I mean, 30 days, excuse me, unsafe structure notice, that the city Community Development Department may undertake whatever action is necessary to bring the property into compliance, including disconnect of utilities and/or demolition. Here are some photographs of the blinding condition at 1245 West Van Patten. You've seen the aerial photograph of the exterior walls have collapsed, ceiling structure nearly entirely has collapsed, several interior, exterior walls, some of the exterior debris that's around the site. You see here on the next, the electrical hazards, ceiling fans with wires that are, that, well, they're not active now because we disconnected the utility service, but they were before we took. utility service, but they were before we took that measure. And then we have damage of water in sewer pipes due to the fire, and more damage here due to the fire, exterior walls that are, that are starting to fail, and there's no support here for the ceiling structure, and fire damage to interior materials, and fire hazard as well as mold within the interior of the building. And then a few last ones. What you see here, the structural damage due to fire, but I showed this photograph because behind this bedspread or serapee was the closure that the occupant was using to live in the portion of the building behind, behind all of this. And then this is more exterior wall being held up by various materials, but not structural types of materials. And some additional inoperative vehicle on the property, and some of the debris that you see surrounding property. These are the statutory authority. We have to take these actions, including the state statute of Section 318.5, dangerous buildings or debris removal notice, and right of municipality to remove and lean a property for demolition cost if necessary. And then that concludes my report, except that your options are the same as we previously had. If you vote yes on this resolution, then demolition will be initiated. If you deny, then that would mean that you don't necessarily agree with our findings. If you can also amend, I'm not certain what those amendments would be, or you can vote to table. I have not heard from the owners regarding a request for it to be rehabilitated, because this property is far beyond rehabilitation. You asked earlier on a property we just had under consideration, if I thought it could be rehabbed, this property, I can very affirmatively say, this property cannot be rehabbed. It's subject for demolition. That concludes my presentation. I and the Code Enforcement and the Police Department are here with, to answer questions you may have.
Thanks, Larry. Counselor Bencomo?
Thanks, Larry. Thanks, Mayor. How long has it been vacant for now?
Mayor and Counselor Bencomo, you asked, how long has it been in this condition?
No, no, vacant.
Oh, vacant. About two months now.
Two months, okay. And I'm, sorry, Larry, I missed the person who was living there. They're related to the owners?
Mayor and Counselor Bencomo, it's my understanding that is the owner's son.
Okay.
His name is John Hernandez, and her name is Lorraine Hernandez.
Thank you. Larry, I want to know, honestly, I want to know what took so long to get us here.
I'm sorry, didn't understand.
I want to know what took so long to get us to this point, because we, Code has known about this, the condition of this house for a very long time. When I first came on board, I had a very insightful ride along with Officer Naya, who's now gone, on some of these properties. And this, this has been at the top of their list for a very long time. And so I just, and I understand that legal always tells us, right, that property rights are some of the most protected. And I just wonder, though, how, when it's a public health hazard, why it takes us, the city, this long to get here? And I say that with frustrations, that I'm still waiting to hear on 1212 Brownlee as well. And so I'm just curious about what takes, what is it that's taking this long for these kinds of properties?
Mayor, Counselor Bencomo, Larry Nichols for the record. The Code Compliance Officers brought this to my attention about four months ago, I believe it was. And then we went through the, we went and did the inspection with building inspectors and myself. And then we brought that information to the legal department to make sure that we would be processing this to observe due process and property rights. And that period of time, I think was probably about the two-month period of time. And then it was determined that it would be, a resolution would be written and brought to council for action. So all of those processes is what took the time.
I also just want to note that this property and 1212 Brownlee are near an elementary school, an elementary school where kids love to walk to school from this neighborhood. And so I just, as much as we are asking property owners to take this seriously, I want us to take it seriously too, right? I want us to, and I know Code's desk, please don't misunderstand, I know that you all take it very seriously. And so I just want us, as council and administration, to take it as seriously and honestly, go after properties like this that are just such a hazard to our community. And we wouldn't let this fly in any other much wealthier neighborhood in the city. So I just wanted to say that. It's, for the first time ever, I'm very hot in this chamber. That never happens, I'm usually freezing, but I'm all worked up now. So I'm just gonna not say anything now. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay. Counselor Corran, did you, no, no, all right. Members of the public, yes, sir. Just need you to state your name, please.
I'm Scott Weatherholt.
Well, when you come, yeah, when you come to the mic.
I'm Scott Weatherholt. I am the sole member of Embassy LLC. I am the property owner directly to the west of this subject property. My property is 1253 West Van Patten. I'd like to state, first of all, that, yeah, this property has been negatively affecting me and my property for quite some time. Obviously, property value, if I were to try to sell my property right now, I'm not sure that I would even be able to. My property is a duplex. I provide affordable housing through La Clinica de Familia, through Section 8, also through the VA. I have many properties around town that I do this. I think I would also have a hard time re-renting if one of my units came vacant with this subject property next door. It is, the subject property is not vacant. Whether it be vagrants, or the family, or whoever it is, is continually moving back on the property, staying either in sheds, or the abandoned building, or abandoned vehicles. Now there is an RV that was moved onto the property a few days ago, with the, apparently the VIN numbers removed. On a daily, nightly basis, the illegal occupants of that property are stealing the utilities from my property. I've had to go over there, I have cut hoses off of my hose bibs for the utilities that I'm paying for. My tenants have cut electrical cords that they've plugged into our electrical outlets. This doesn't matter, they just go and steal another hose or another electrical cord from somebody else's property in the neighborhood, and the next night, they're hooked back up to our utilities again. My tenants really try not to get involved because they fear reprisal from, you know, the next door neighbors. I have one tenant who's a single woman with a special needs child. She doesn't want to get involved. We call the police and we call Code, and they do respond. But honestly, let's, you know, let's face it, they have higher priority calls to deal with than somebody hooking their hose up to our building. So they do respond, and they do what they can. But it's a nightly issue, it's a daily issue. This property really, it's more than a nuisance, it's more than a health hazard. It's, it's a daily, nightly crime infestation. It's, it's like nothing I've ever seen. I've been a professional in property management for over 20 years. I've never had to deal with something like this. I'm even at my wit's end, I don't know what to do. At least not in, not remaining in a legal standpoint, I don't. So I come before you today also, imploring that something be done. I don't know if more can be done other than just the building, if the, if the whole lot needs to be raised. It's not just the structure itself, it's all of the debris, the junk, the vehicles that are on the property. It needs cleared, the entire lot. Otherwise, these occupants will continue to be there and be a problem. The health hazard is more than just the structure itself, what remains of it. That's all I have to say. Thank you for hearing me.
Larry, if we were to, if we needed, and the city had to demolish it and clean it up, like this gentleman was saying, I think theoretically, we could, and then put a lien on that property, yeah?
Mayor, Larry Nichols for the record, yes, we have a basic estimate of what the demolition cost would be. It's going to be in the neighborhood of 12,000 to 15,000. And what would happen if the owner could not demolish on their own means, then the city would do it, well, through a contractor, and a lien would be placed on the property.
Yeah, good.
Mayor?
Yes.
Just an additional question to that. What about the cleanup of the other stuff?
We can put that in there.
Okay.
Mayor and Counselor Bencomo, the demolition would be to, as the previous speaker just mentioned, it would be for the entire site, because we pointed out, not only the main structure, but the debris that was throughout the rest of the site.
Okay. And the further questions? Christine?
This is on the motion to approve Resolution 23-056. Counselor Beta?
Yes.
Counselor Graham is absent. Counselor Bencomo?
Yes.
Counselor Corran?
Yes.
Counselor Flores?
Yes.
Counselor Gondra?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Okay, so next we go to board appointments. Looked like Counselor Tessa Beta for the voting delegate for the National League of Cities. So, yeah, looks like we need a motion, a second.
I move very happily to elevate Tessa to a level of, I don't know what this means. I don't know what it means, but congratulations.
I'll explain in some council comments.
Moved happily by Counselor Corran. Was it second happily by Counselor, equally? Okay. All right. Motion second. Christine?
This is on the motion to appoint Counselor Beta as the voting delegate to the National League of Cities. Counselor Beta?
Yes.
Counselor Graham is absent. Counselor Bencomo?
Yes.
Counselor Corran?
Yes.
Counselor Flores?
A hearty yes.
Counselor Gondra?
Excitedly, yes.
And Mayor?
Yes. Okay, yes. All right, next, we're gonna go to notice proposed ordinances. There will be no public discussion, and counsel may ask for clarification on proposed ordinance. So the next one is gonna be 10.1, Council Bill Number 23-008, Ordinance Number 3014.
Bring it forward.
Bring it forward. Okay, so next item is City Council Member Board Reports and Comment. I have none other than, I'm gonna have to leave, and Mayor Portem's gonna take over the meeting after I leave, so I will unhavily, unhavily, well, I have a few things to do before the, the, okay, yeah, 13 months. All right, so, thank you. Yeah, I know, you guys are picking at me. Okay, so, we'll see you, have a good evening. Good luck, daggers tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselor Bencomo and I met with some nonprofits related to the property, the destruction and property crime related to, in the area around families and youth innovation. Plus, it was a really, I thought, great meeting to discuss what we are doing short term, but what we would like to do long term about the issues as they see it. They've been very grateful to the camera that was placed there. Since then, they've seen nearly really no crime occur. And so from Efo and my conversations, I think that would be an easy, short-term fix as it relates to placing, you know, purchasing more cameras and being able to place cameras in different parts of the city. But some of the other discussions were very specific to a streets unit, more long-term care related to substance abuse and addiction services. We talked about MAT program, which is medical assisted treatment, medicine assisted treatment, I think, I don't know why I'm spacing, and looking at a long-term substance abuse facility. I know this is something that I've spoken to Larry Heran about, and I know that my student has been working with the Department of Health and had a meeting on Friday related to interest in starting a streets unit, and more specifically, working on, and this is something that I've been speaking about for some time, and I know Counselor Bencomo has as well, is these restrooms, the facilities around the city, so that we get less urination and defecation. But alongside those is drop boxes to store, safely dispose of needles and different things of that sort. And so I'm looking forward, I was so sick last week with a stomach flu, and I'm just sort of coming out of it, going through emails and such, so I'm not sure how that meeting, what transpired from that meeting. But from there, I would like to have a larger meeting, bringing people in, that could really help sort of formulate a plan moving forward. As, we also talk, now that I see DC Danes, we talked about the lead program. And the lead program, it's specific to our opioid, you know, for folks that maybe are first time involvement with crime and whatnot. And I push back a little bit on that, because I think it's, it could be a good program. But what it sounds like is happening in our community is the folks that we're, that get to, that you're arresting have more than one incident, it's several incidences, and don't quite fit that formulary that they've come up with. So there's some discussion about changing that formula, and hope, and opening it up some more, so that it's just not so rigid, because we're just not seeing folks coming in with just a first time offense. They've had several offenses, and just not feeling, so they'd want to have a different conversation with law enforcement about what that would look like. And so I thought, from our Public Safety Select Committee meeting, that might be something that we speak of, DC Danes, moving forward, just giving you some help, giving others, you know, some of our NGOs and the population more help in terms of referral sources for the program. Because if you can believe it, there's only been one referral made to this program, and there's money sitting there. Like many of the programs, such as our drug courts and different programs, that are deferment for folks, have many slots available, but no referrals being made to these programs. So it's a, it's a, we had a lot of discussion around that. And I think that if we continue to meet, to address the issues, I think we're gonna come up with a good, sound plan moving forward. I know, Efo, you've been really open to hearing about a lot of these ideas. And then I'll just say, you know, again, we heard sort of that narrative about desert hope. And I just want to remind votes, the geobahn vote is an important vote. Please get out there if you haven't. Tomorrow is Election Day. And, you know, one of those is for affordable housing. I know that our Housing First model works. I know- I know that our Housing First model works, I know it does, it's evidence-based, it works, but we have to have the right players at the table, and I continue to be concerned, Efo, that we are hearing over and over again about this management group that's fairly new, but I think if I could ask that we schedule a meeting with that management group that, and Housing Authority again, to discuss what we continue to hear Monday after Monday related to the kinds of things that are happening at Desert Home. It's not a surprise to me, those are things that I'm hearing specifically in other Housing Authority units around town, and we just really need to get a hold of this, and so if there's a way that you can help us with that, an expedited meeting with the mayor and I, I think that would be very, very helpful. And I think that's going to be it. So, Councilor Flotis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, the big highlight of my being a city councilor was that a community meeting was held in my district for the first time in about two years. And I really want to thank Annette Granado who actually set it up and made sure that the district residents were notified. I also like to thank Barbara De Leon, Barb, Barbret, Barbie, Barbara De Leon, David Cedillo, Lieutenant Joy Witala, I always mispronounce that, is that close? Close but no cigar?
It's pretty close.
Okay.
Well, we all just said it three different ways.
I know. It's, so-
We could probably go as just Lieutenant Joy, and I think we'd do, okay, ma'am.
Yeah, Lieutenant Joy. Chief Smith, Jason Smith, Officers Kelly and Glimp, Sergeant Alva, Sonia Delgado. Did I mention David Cedillo? If I didn't, I'll mention him again, because, and it was really, I think that I held several community meetings before COVID, and maybe it's my experience being on council now, it's my fifth year, but I have to say, I think it was probably the, one of the most, one of the best meetings ever held for our community. And I just can't praise our directors enough, I mean, David Cedillo, just, you know, and I asked for different department heads to come and present, because one of the big issues in our community is roads, and David was very methodical, he just laid it down, it was all very scientific in terms of how we approach it. And I think a lot of people in our community think that they have the worst street, it's no worse street than the one I live on type of thing. But I want to thank you, David, again, and then Joy is probably, Joy is quite a joy. I think that she and, and, she, well, she along with the rest of the department really adds the human element to being a police, you know, working with LCPD. And it was just wonderful how she just laid everything out. And there was a question she wasn't quite able to address, but I can't remember, I can't even remember what it was, but I remember she handled that beautifully. And Chief Smith was, it's almost like you were transformed. It was like, who is that man? Who is that man with that mustache? But it was, his presentation was actually very, 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 no, very good. It was very, it was just, it was almost as if you had a script and you had really memorized it and just went blow by blow by blow. And then, of course, Sergeant Alva actually escorted me into the building, and then, and then David Cedillo escorted me out of the building. And I'm very cautious about our, you know, there was one resident who actually had a knife, remember, who did I bring that? Yeah, he had a knife, he had a mic, you know, and so I went over to all the officers and Joy, everybody, and I said, "He has a knife." And they said, "It's legal." I said, "Is that legal?" "Yeah, it's legal." So, it just gets a little, you know, hairy when you have community meetings, but that was wonderful. The other news in District 6 is that Temple Bethel has a new rabbi, and Nan Ruben, and Nan Ruben, I guess one was president a week or two ago, and Nan is now the president. But they invited me to the, to her installation, which was yesterday. And Yvette Lutman is a lovely person who moved here after really scouting many, many opportunities, and she and her, and her wife are living happily here with their cats. And I think that, you know, Rabbi Larry Carroll is a tough act to follow, but I think she's going to, she's definitely going to fit the bill, and the congregants already like her very much. As you may recall, we had a public art proclamation presented to the city art board a few weeks ago, and Nan Ruben was present because it was her brainchild to have QR codes next to the displayed city art. And she was just glowing about it yesterday, and said that they actually had a youth, their youth group participate, and that it was absolutely wonderful. So, with that, I'll turn it over to my colleague, Councilor Corran, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Flotis. Councilor Corran?
Thank you, Mayor Protam, thank you, Councilor Flotis. I just want to give a couple of quick updates to those of you who are left, wow, you guys really stuck it out, Adrianne, David. Hi, you guys stayed with us for a while. Thank you for being, it feels different when you look out and it looks like this. I just want to give a couple notes. First, on the animal services front, I do want to make a note that both our November and our December meetings are, oh, no, just our November meeting and our December meeting are changed slightly in their dates, November 17th and November 22nd, so we shifted those to accommodate the holidays. I also wanted to mention the Firefighters Union, IAF 2362, I think is their number, had a really fun event at Andalese the other day. Councilor Flotis, I thought for sure you would be there, given your, you know, affinity to firefighters. It was great, it was great. The firefighters were there, as were a bunch of adoptable dogs for, for, available for adoption, and I think it was a really great event, and I also did, but I did get you a calendar, so don't worry, the calendars are still available for sale of firefighters plus adoptable dogs, all to benefit the Animal Services Center. So, that was a really cool and fun event, and I really appreciate the folks who participated and their very fun evening. So, the last animal-related item that I just wanted to mention was the TNR process and our relationship with thinking about spaying and neutering cats, I appreciate you mentioning the new rabbi and her partner in cats to fulfill all the stereotypes that exist in the world, as I appreciate very much that being the Catwoman on the board, the TNR coordinator position has closed, Eric has been working really closely with the community organizations and folks from the community to develop a really good program for that person to implement and work on getting more cats spayed and neutered, and we have been seeing an increase of city animal control of animals that are already TNR'd, being picked up and then returned immediately, and then reducing our costs and sort of, you know, it's hard to keep track of because it's literally herding cats, but it does seem like it's already up to a good, a good rate. So, I just wanted to give some updates on the Animal Services Center and animal-related projects that we have going on. The last item that I think I wanted to, I don't, oh, I think that, I can't remember the last thing that I wanted to talk about, so I will just turn it over to Councilor Bencomo.
Thank you, Councilor Corran. Councilor Bencomo?
Thank you, Mayor Protam. You heard DC Danes feelings, by the way?
Oh, I did?
Yeah. Because of the affinity for firefighters and not police officers.
I love you, I love you.
I wanted, I mostly, I have a couple things, mostly just want to talk about our West Pacheco events that we held on October 28th and 29th. On October 28th, we had, I'm very grateful for Keep Las Cruces Beautiful and James Woods' team for helping us organize a cleanup event down West Pacheco, where we had about 40 volunteers show up and they picked up about 70 bags of trash along the corridor, and so it was really beautiful and it was really amazing, and I just loved that people like who lived in the area walked over to help and other folks who, you know, are a part of the volunteer network, and I'm just so deeply grateful for that network and for James Woods and all, everything they do. And then the next day, we held a Health and Wellness Fair, and I just want to read out all the organizations that came because it was just really beautiful and incredible. La Casa, Jardín de los Niños, Mobile Integrated Health folks were there, El Caldito, Ideal Option, Amador Mobile Health, Mesia Valley Community of Hope, Crisis Triage Center, La Casa de Peregrinos, Burrell College, Zia Recovery, High Desert Hospice, Mesia Valley Hospice, the Department of Health, Familia Dental. And of course, Officer Klimak came and Officer Glimp and the Code folks were there, and I think we provided, came through, they picked up food by Casa de Peregrinos, the Burrell College, health exams, free health assessments, and I just, huge shout-out to them, like they've been able to integrate into our community really amazingly, and I just was so grateful they came. And then, Amador Mobile Health and the Department of Health, I think gave like about, in a span of two hours, about 40 vaccines, both the flu and COVID vaccines, and so it was just really successful, I feel like we were able to bring really positive attention to the corridor, and it just made me so excited to be able to engage with these incredible organizations, with residents of the area, with staff, to be able to pull it off, and I, you know, I wouldn't have been able to do it without Annette, without Cynthia, and my intern Sydney, I just, I just want to really, I'm so, so grateful for them, and just wanted to share my thanks. And to me, part of it, this is part of revitalization, you know, harm reduction efforts, efforts to house people, efforts to build, you know, neighborhood watch teams and small business watch teams, and people feeling like they belong to this area and this is their community, that's a part of revitalization. And so, I'm just very proud of those efforts and whatever we continue to do. I also met with the coach from Crosstown Boxing that has come a couple of times to talk to us with his boxer kids. I went to the boxing gym last week, and they do incredible things, beautiful things. If you ever want a good cost to donate to, I definitely recommend them what they do in working with at-risk youth. They definitely had some challenges, security, safety challenges, and Officer Glimp and Officer Klimak went almost like two days after I asked them to, and so it was, I just really appreciate them and how quickly they moved to do some of that. Second to last thing that I'm very proud of is that, Efo reminded me that I can give the announcement that on November 28th, Zero Fair will be officially starting, a pilot program. You know, this has been a huge priority for me since getting on the council, and it's clear that this council prioritizes anything that is going to pull people out of poverty, and this to me is one of those pieces in that huge social equity puzzle, and so I'm just excited that that's happening, and I'm, I'm sure will continue to champion that, for it to become permanent, not just a pilot project. And then the last thing, last, last thing, if you have not voted, please go vote, tomorrow is the very last day, and if you are in line at 7:00 and there's long lines and you're in line, if you are in line by 7:00, do not leave, they have to see you. So, that's it, thank you, Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Councilor Bencomo. And last but certainly not least, Councilor Abada?
Thank you, Mayor Protam. I think one of the things that I'll bring up today is that about the different organizations that were from, like the Municipal League and League of Cities. It just so happens I came back last week from the Municipal League and N M Counties' joint meeting, and this was for leadership to come together, hear each other's priorities for the upcoming legislative session, and then we do vote to kind of support each other's items or not. In this year, we were in full support of items that ranged from taxation considerations to public safety, and even looking at how do we address mental health issues. And so, these organizations kind of come together to look at, I would say, policy that we have to work with at different levels of government. Obviously, League of Cities deals with the national level, Municipal League does our state level, and then they offer things like training and other types of support mechanisms for the municipalities. We, as a larger organization, don't necessarily need to utilize all the functions, like they just developed a new program to help with like grant writing and everything, but we have our own fantastic staff here that many people are just, I've been told, and so we don't necessarily have to use that function, but there's quite a few others that we can. So, I'm excited to help represent that. Next year, the joint meeting between the cities and counties will be convened by the city side, they rotate year to year, so next year I'll be chairing that. And then next week, I will be going to the National League of Cities, thank you for allowing me to vote. Our municipality, because of our size, gets two votes with this, and we'll be looking at different policy measures. During the conference, they have everything ranging from housing and supportive needs like that, they have a section that I'm actually excited about, which is gathering of cities that also are part of university towns, and so how to really maximize that, because I think that is still an untapped potential that we have and something that I see within my district on how to really bring up and revitalize a little bit of that area. With that, I've been to like three, I guess, presentations with elementary school students about what we do here at the city. Mr. Peely, I have invited every single one of those classes to come here and see the diocese, to tour around City Hall, so if you end up with calls, you'll know who to blame for it all. And also, Mr. Peely, myself, and Mr. Tomapio met with members of the soccer community, again, just to hear some issues that are still persistent. I want to thank you both for having that conversation and looking at ways that we can move forward. I believe that'll be all for today, thank you, Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Councilor Abada, appreciate that. And now, Mr. Peely.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Counsel, you know, I'm actually trying to go through my list, making sure I didn't miss anything, because I really only have one, usually I get a list of things from everyone, but the only thing I have today is just a reminder about the Veterans Parade, that's November 12th at 11:00 a.m., and especially because our very own Larry Nichols is our, one of our grand marshals. The farmer's market?
The farmer's market gets moved, right? The weekend of the Veterans Parade, farmer's market gets moved to Sunday.
Yep, thank you. And that's all I have for departments, may I present?
Thank you, Mr. Peely. Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So, move to adjourn.
Motion made by Councilor Flotis, I didn't hear, the second, second by Councilor Abada. Christine? Was it the, well, I heard her first, so.
I know you heard me first, but I didn't have my mic on, but it doesn't matter.
Christine?
This is on the motion to adjourn the regular meeting, Councilor Abada?
Yes.
Councilor Graham is absent, Councilor Bencomo?
Yes.
Councilor Corran?
Yes.
Councilor Flotis?
Yes.
Mayor Protam?
Yes.
And the mayor's absent.